Testing for the committee room, testing one, two. We hear you on the Zoom.
Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations. At this time, we ask that everybody can please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. I'm New York City Councilmember Chi Ose, Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations. Welcome to our Oversight Hearing on Administering DCLA's Cultural Development Fund, or CDF. Today, the Committee will be hearing a bill which is directly related to our hearing topic, which I have sponsored. It is Intro Number 1184, a local law to amend the New York City Charter in relation to requiring the Department of Cultural Affairs to report annually on department funding of art and cultural organizations and institutions. More about this in a minute. We will also be hearing four resolutions not directly related to our hearing topic. Reso Number 509, sponsored by Councilmember James Gennaro in declaring April as SIC Awareness and Appreciation Month in New York City. Reso Number 639, also sponsored by Councilmember Gennaro declaring July annually as Muslim American Heritage Month in the city of New York to celebrate the culture and history of Muslim Americans and their contributions to New York City communities. Reso Number 513, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon declaring June 3 in New York City as World Bicycle Day. And Reso Number 568, sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams in designating May 10 annually as National Panhellenic Council Day in the city of New York to recognize the contributions made to social change by members of nine black sororities and fraternities known as the Divine Nine. I'm going to switch mics because I think this has some feedback on it. Now, let me welcome my colleague, Councilmember Julie Menon, to speak about her resolution. Councilmember Menon?
Thank you so much, Chair Ose, for holding today's Oversight Hearing on DCLA's Cultural Development Fund, and good to see you, Commissioner. I am here today to speak about my resolution, 513, which Chair Ose spoke a little bit about. About 2 million New Yorkers embrace bicycles as a mode of transportation. My resolution would designate June 3 as World Bicycle Day. From 2011 to 2021, there was a growth of 104% in daily cycling in our city. Each year, more and more New Yorkers are relying on bicycles to commute to work, to go to the park, or just to go through our city streets. On a single day, there are over 550,000 cycling trips in the city according to the U.S. Census's American Community Survey. June 3 is currently recognized by the U.N. as World Bicycle Day. The day is to encourage every person to use bicycles. As the United Nations notes, the day can promote health, it can prevent disease, promote tolerance, mutual understanding, and respect. I was proud to help push for a safer bike route over the Roosevelt Island Bridge, which is in my district, to ensure that people can ride their bikes safely. Together, we can pedal toward a future where cyclists can empower communities in our city. Sorry for the bicycle joke. I really want to thank the Chair, as well as the councilmembers who support this resolution, and I want to thank Bill Draper, Kevin Kotatauski, and from my team, my Chief of Staff, Jonathan Shutt, my Budget Director, Brandon Jordan, and Legislative aide John Mendez Garcia for their support. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will now be reading remarks from Councilmember Gennaro on his resolution. The councilmember is unfortunately sick with COVID, but is asked that I deliver these remarks on his behalf. Councilmember Gennaro urges each of you, members of the City Council, to sign on to Reso 639. This resolution seeks to declare the month of July as Muslim American Heritage Month in the city of New York, a time dedicated to celebrating the rich culture, history, and invaluable contributions of Muslim Americans to our communities. New York City stands as a symbol of diversity and unity, embracing people from various backgrounds, beliefs, and traditions by designating July as Muslim American Heritage Month. We have the unique opportunity to showcase the influence of Muslim Americans throughout history, shaping the social, economic, and cultural landscape of New York City. This recognition is not just an acknowledgement of their achievements, but also a demonstration of our commitment to inclusivity and equal representation. It will be an occasion to foster understanding and promote dialogue between different communities. Reso 639 signifies our collective commitment to recognizing the importance of every community in New York City. Together, we take this opportunity to promote tolerance, celebrate diversity, and create an environment that embraces all cultures and backgrounds. On a related note, today, another reso of Gennaro's, Reso 509, will also be heard. Reso 509 proposes to declare April a SIC Awareness and Appreciation Month in New York City, a step forward in celebrating the invaluable contributions of the SIC community to the tapestry of our great city. New York City, at its heart, is a symbol of diversity and inclusivity, a haven for individuals from all walks of life, cultures, and faiths. Embracing and understanding one another is what makes our city truly extraordinary. The SIC community, with its rich history and profound traditions, has been an integral part of our city's social and cultural fabric for generations. By designating April as SIC Awareness and Appreciation Month, we send a powerful message that we recognize and value the remarkable contributions SICs have made to the prosperity and vitality of our city. This resolution is a testament to our commitment to fostering an environment of understanding and respect where every citizen feels valued and appreciated for their unique contributions. Councilmember Gennaro implores each of you to lend your support to Reso 509 to stand up for diversity and to celebrate the remarkable contributions of our SIC brothers and sisters. Now on to our Oversight Hearing, which is a very important one. For the past 20 years, the Cultural Development Fund, or CDF, has been a pot of money that the Department of Cultural Affairs draws on to make competitive grant awards to arts and cultural organizations. Exploring changes and streamlining the CDF application process was brought up in 2017 during the development of CREATE NYC, the Comprehensive Cultural Plan for New York City. In the 2019 action plan that supplanted CREATE NYC, one identified strategy was to explore changes to DCLA's grant programs to, quote, "offer more flexible and multi-year support," end quote. Last year, for the fiscal year 2023 funding cycle, some changes were, in fact, made to the CDF application, review, and award process. The results of that round of funding were announced on December 15, 2022, when DCLA distributed over $58 million in CDF grants to 1,070 cultural organizations, the most funding to the largest number of cultural organizations ever. DCLA Commissioner Lori Combo said at the time, quote, "Our ongoing CDF reform process helped advance first-time grantees, smaller organizations, and those led by people of color, a big first step in fostering greater equity," end quote. Indeed, all of those outcomes were positive. However, some leaders in the arts and cultural community expressed concerns as well, both about the grant-making process and about the outcomes of fiscal year 2023 cycle. Now, we are in the fiscal year 24 cycle. The applications window closed on May 9, 2023. Though awards have not been made yet, applications for fiscal year 25 will be available in early 2024. By that time, the CDF awards for 2024 are made in the coming months. It may be too late to make any adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 application process. So, any further steps in the, quote, "ongoing CDF reform process," end quote, for fiscal year 25 would need to be considered now. The bill that I have sponsored would require DCLA to prepare an annual report detailing DCLA's spending in support of arts and cultural organizations and institutions, as well as DCLA's spending on direct agency expenses. I'm especially concerned about public reporting on the distribution of CDF grants, disaggregated by borough, by art genre, and by organization size, as well as how many grants of what sizes are being awarded to BIPOC-led and BIPOC-serving organizations. At today's hearing, the Committee hopes to learn how the FY24 application and panel review process has gone this year and when awards are expected. The Committee would also like to know what additional reforms DCLA is considering for fiscal year 25 based on experiences last year and this year. Additionally, the Committee looks forward to hearing feedback from the arts and cultural organizations that have been, that are, or that wish to be CDF grantees, and what their experiences have been like in recent funding cycles. Those arts and cultural organizations are the heart of our city, and we want to support them in every way that we can. Now, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the Committee who are present. Councilmember Ung, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Joseph, and online, we have Councilmember Moya. And I think I also saw Councilmember Dinwiddie, who should be here or come back here. I would also like to thank my staff and Committee staff for their work in preparing today's hearing. Mae Vuchirpong Vitana, my Policy and Budget Director; Christina Yalamadi, the Committee's Legislative Council; Regina Paul, the Committee's Legislative Policy Analyst; and Sandra Gray, the Committee's Financial Analyst. Now, I would like to address some housekeeping items before we begin with DCLA's testimony. Today is an in-person hearing with the option of virtual testimony for the public, of course. The Committee will be accepting registrations for testimony throughout the hearing. Anyone who is attending in person and who wishes to testify in person should see the Sergeant of Arms to fill out a witness slip. Can the Sergeant of Arms wave their hand? Even if you registered in advance online, thank you. We will begin today's hearing with testimony from DCLA, followed by a Councilmember question and answers, then move to public testimony. We will limit Councilmember Q and A, including comments, to five minutes. And during the public testimony portion of the hearing, witnesses from the public will be limited to two minutes. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. The Committee will also be accepting written testimony for up to 72 hours after the hearing. Let me ask our Committee Counsel to administer the affirmation to the witnesses from DCLA who may then begin their testimony. Christina, take it away.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this Committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Ose, and members of the Committee. I am Commissioner Lori Combo of the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs, here today to testify in regards to today's topic, administering DCLA's Cultural Development Fund. And I am joined today by a number of my colleagues from the agency. I just want to say I'm so proud to have so many of my CDF team here. We are really excited, and it's been great working with each of you crisscrossing New York City. I was just with Councilmember Ose at the Guggenheim, where we were discussing climate and its impact on its city. And I was with you, Commissioner Ung, recently at the Queens Botanic Garden. And I'm proud to say that my orchid is still alive. Yes.
Give you orchids? Wow.
It's the event to be at.
Yeah.
And they give a small orchid to each person that comes, and I'm thrilled that after almost six weeks, it's still alive.
That's impressive.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And Councilmember Joseph, it's been a pleasure talking with you about the African burial ground in your district and looking forward to continuing to assist you. And Councilmember Hanif, we have not done anything since we brought Little Amal to Port Authority. So, we've got to make sure that we do that. But that was really a great and memorable experience to welcome asylum seekers with art and culture in New York City, and we look forward to doing so much more of that. So, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the Cultural Development Fund, which is one of the primary ways that the city of New York invests in its vibrant cultural community. In fiscal year 2023, 1,070 cultural organizations, record-breaking, received more than $58 million through the CDF fund. This, by comparison, in fiscal year 19, the last full year before the pandemic, 985 groups received $51.3 million in CDF support. So, we are proud of our hard work in collaboration with you to have increased the amount and distribution of this funding for cultural programming in communities all across this city. Before I discuss the CDF reforms and what's coming next for the program, I want to take a moment to talk about this program, its goals and criteria, a little more in depth. The CDF is a competitive, peer-evaluated grant process that supports a broad, multidisciplinary group of diverse not-for-profit organizations, providing cultural programming for New York City residents. The hallmark of the CDF is to support cultural programming that is accessible to the public. While we continue to revise the process to make it more equitable, public service and impact remain the most significant criteria for CDF applications. As stated in the guidelines, the organization provides art and/or cultural programming in the five boroughs of New York City during the grant period with consideration toward accessibility, affordability, and equity. Put simply, how does this cultural program serve New Yorkers in a way that truly invites them in? Whether that's through reduced financial barriers, multilingual programming, or any number of creative ways that our cultural community connects with its audiences. Next, we look at organizational accountability, meaning if we invest public funds in this organization, does it have the capacity to deliver the programs it promises for New Yorkers? These first two criteria account for 85% of an organization's score. The final criteria is quality. Is the programming of a caliber that will serve our residents well? It's with these core principles that we support over 1,000 cultural not-for-profits across the city this year, more than any other agency in the nation. Speaking as someone who founded a cultural not-for-profit in Brooklyn, when we got that first CDF grant, it was game-changing. To have this public investment in your work as an arts group is such a vote of confidence in your team and your programming. Even if the grants aren't huge, it also opens the door for other support because so many funders look to the CDF panel process as the gold standard. I've reviewed the substance of the CDF reforms in previous hearings before the Council, so I'll keep my summary here brief. The reforms to the CDF were the first significant updates to the process since 2008 and began with the CREATE NYC Cultural Plan released in 2017 that I was proud to vote on. When the CDF panel process was suspended for two years during the pandemic, it gave DCLA staff an opportunity to engage with the field, conduct analysis, and plan how to integrate these reforms when the application and panel review process restarted in full for the fiscal year 23 cycle. In spring 2022, we restarted the CDF application process with the first set of pilot reforms, which included increasing investment in historically marginalized communities, which was a huge win. With the reforms, 125 new organizations, I'm going to say that again, 125 new organizations were funded. And 82% of POC-led groups saw increased awards. This is groundbreaking. Greatest ability for grantees, especially smaller organizations. We doubled the minimum grant award from $5,000 to $10,000 and made permanent a pandemic-era policy of expanding eligibility for multi-year awards to all grantees regardless of budget size. This was the first time since 2008, when the CDF was created in its current form, that the minimum for awards was increased. We greatly streamlined the application process with a simplified digital application, reducing the administrative burden on groups applying for funding. Based on a survey of CDF applicants, we found that 89% of users felt the application was intuitive to navigate. 94% understood how to answer all questions, and 99% found the guidelines helpful. We increased the panelist honorarium and cast a wider net to recruit CDF panelists. We expanded the profile of panelists from strictly development staff to include a broader range of cultural workers, board members, and artists. Mainly, many members of the Council helped to distribute our call for panelists among their constituents, and we are so grateful for your partnership because when the Council partners with the Department of Cultural Affairs, we're able to reach every corner of New York City. We are so proud that you were able to assist us. And because of your partnership, 47% of panelists were first timers this year, a sign that we're succeeding in attracting new talent into this process. We look forward to your ongoing support and collaboration in this effort. These were the goals of the reforms rolled out in the first half of 2022. When the CDF grants went out toward the end of 2022 calendar year, we saw the results. As the first competitive grant cycle since the onset of the pandemic, we weren't sure what the response would be in the new reforms. But we had a record number of applications, around 1,400, and a record number of grantees, 1,070. And 73% of these grantees received more funding, thanks mainly to the increases in minimum award sizes, along with the addition of new budget bans that increased awards for the majority of grant recipients. All groups are now eligible for multi-year awards, a source of stable funding that was previously available only to larger organizations. The average awards for small groups with budgets under $250,000 increased by 67%. As I mentioned before, more than 82% of groups that identify as being led or founded by people of color saw an increase in their awards over the previous year. And there was also an increase in the number of awards for first-time applicants, with 125 groups in this category receiving funding versus just 47 in the previous competitive grant cycle. While these early results are promising, we continue to seek ways to improve the process. We've heard from the sector. We appreciate hearing from the sector. My amazing team in the Programs Unit offered guidance and feedback to every single applicant who sought it out. I've listened to feedback on Culture at Three and other sector calls, and we've carefully reviewed the thoughtful recommendations submitted by cultural committee leaders and advocates. Based on this feedback, we made a number of changes to the fiscal year 24 CDF panel process, including an extra round of panel conversation to allow more deliberation, the creation of a panel advisory committee featuring experts from the field to help spread the word and recruit panelists, the full implementation of the new digital application, which was streamlined and made the process even more accessible. Last month, our Programs Unit wrapped the panel review process for the Fiscal Year 24 Cultural Development Fund. For this enormous task, our team of 10 convened 175 panelists for 35 review panels stretching over nine weeks, during which time they reviewed 642 funding applications involving an estimated 1,400 hours of prep time. Again, my hat's off to this tremendous team for this incredible accomplishment. As they worked through these new applications, we also have 650 groups who will be in the renewal process this year, as part of our reform expanding multi-year awards eligibility to the entire grantee pool regardless of budget size. We look forward to announcing the outcomes of our panel process later this year. I want to close by saying that our partnership with the City Council is absolutely central to our ability to support and serve our city's cultural sector. I'm confident that working together with members of the Council and stakeholders in the field, we can continue to make the process even better for the cultural organizations we support and which in turn deliver amazing services and programming in every corner of New York City. The Council initiatives and member items are a huge benefit to arts groups and a huge source of equitable funding thanks to the Coalition of Theaters of Color, the Cultural Immigrant Initiative, and member items in each district. We look forward to getting your fiscal year 24 designations in as early as possible. In as early as possible, so we can get the funds to grantees as quickly as possible. We also look forward to working with you to spread the word about the fiscal year 25 CDF call for applicants and panels early next year. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I also want to thank all of the cultural organizations and people that are here to testify. I remember my time being here, that I felt like I spent so much time coming here to testify that I might as well run for office and sit here all day. And that's exactly what happened. So, I appreciate all of you for giving of your time, your energy, preparing your statements. I'm here to hear them, and I look forward to hearing them following my testimony and the Q and A with the City Council. So, I turn it back to you, Chair Ose.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your detailed testimony. And I love to hear that there's progress being made throughout this CDF, you know, process. It's such an integral part of supporting our cultural community, and it's always a work in progress in terms of, you know, our wants to make it better. And I know that that's where the heart lies within the admin, and most especially within DCLA. So, let's dive in. My first question that I wanted to ask is, do you believe that the arts and cultural organizations, for the most part, are satisfied with the fiscal year 23 CDF reforms and the application process as it stands today?
Can you repeat?
Sure.
Can you repeat that one?
Do you find that, or have you been hearing that most of the arts and cultural organizations, for the most part, are satisfied with the CDF reforms made in fiscal year 2023, as well as some of the reforms made in 24 today?
I would say that overall, that the feedback that we've gotten from many organizations, bless you, as we have said, and we're very proud of it, 125 new organizations received funding for the very first time. We are hearing from the field. They are very, very excited about the reforms and that we've opened the process up so that more organizations could apply that previously did not feel that this application was one that reflected them. And I do take personal credit, along with my team. When the city sees a founder and executive director, such as me, founding a small African diaspora art museum, now Commissioner of Cultural Affairs, many organizations feel, this is my time to apply. This Commissioner gets me. She understands the process of applying. She recognizes that a $5,000 grant with all of the work that goes forward in putting together a DCLA application would be better received if it were $10,000 versus $5,000. Also, 82% of BIPOC-led organizations received an increase in their funding award. So, I would say that many people that applied to this process are new. They are very excited. Many people saw an increase in their funding award, which was revolutionary. And people were very thrilled with the application process itself. And so, as I know from being an awardee of this particular application process, I know that in previous years, that when maybe my award was reduced, or maybe I wasn't pleased with the process, trust and belief, I became louder than all of the organizations combined that did get an increase. So, you are going to hear from those organizations who are also not perhaps pleased with the way the process, as they understand it, has unfolded. Anytime you receive a decrease to your award, you're not going to be enthused about it. You're going to want to know what happened. But our team at the Department of Cultural Affairs did an extraordinary job of educating the field about the reforms, about the fact that we were trying to democratize and level the playing field for all cultural organizations. But I'll just close by saying this. These hearings, as far as I see them, are really great opportunities for us to be able to come together and to share what you're hearing, to share what we're hearing, because essentially, we are committed to the same thing, making this a fair, equitable, and transparent process for all parties involved. I know that as Chair of Cultural and Libraries, you want to see a better process and that to be a part of your legacy in terms of how you improve the cultural field, and I share in that. So, I'm looking forward to this hearing on that level in order to be able to do that.
So, I think the shared understanding that we have in terms of what the main critique about the reforms are is that some people have seen a decrease in the grants that have been given to them. Would you say that there are other critiques that your office is hearing in regards to some of the reforms, or is that the main one that you've been hearing?
The main feedback that we've been getting in terms of critique, and I would say it's more of a critique than a criticism, is that organizations have asked about the safety net. Organizations have asked questions in terms of, why are they seeing a reduction? And those are really the main challenges that many organizations are grappling with. But anytime you open up a process to 125 new organizations, when you then open up the process to make it more accessible to more people, when you raise the floor from $5,000 to $10,000, you're going to see a shift. And this is really what is being felt in democratizing the process and making it more fair and equitable for many of the organizations that are applying. So, we recognize this. This is a work in progress. And so, we're going to continue to receive feedback, and we're going to continue to adjust how the program is administered. We don't want to have this finite system that can't be altered or amended to better serve and fit an ever-changing field.
And I believe you just answered this, but do you agree with some of these critiques? And if so, how can DCLA continue to address these issues?
Well, we can always do more with more. Well, we can always do more with more.
Of course.
And I'd say we can always do more with more. But, you know, I want to say that, as Commissioner of the Department of Cultural Affairs, I am so proud of this agency. I'm so proud of this administration. Systematically, when I was in the cultural field on the other side, sitting in these seats right here, we always knew that when budget cuts came, the arts were the first on the chopping block, always. And this administration turned that on its head and made sure that the agency that was not cut during times of budget was the Department of Cultural Affairs, because of the work that we do, because we're revitalizing New York City, because we are educating our young people. So this budget, the last two budget cycles, not only were not subjected to the PEG exercises, but on top of that, this administration made sure that we passed the largest two cultural budgets in New York City's history. And so, as a result of that, we were able to fund more organizations and to expand this process. So, I understand this is a competitive review process. Over 80% of the organizations that applied to the Department of Cultural Affairs were funded. That's a huge percentage of organizations that are funded each year. So we're very proud of that. We recognize that if you are not part of that 80%, you are not going to be pleased with the outcome of that panel review process, correct? But at the same time, our agency doesn't just send out a rejection letter and say, well, you didn't get funded. We're going to help you put together a better application next year. Every single organization that put in to say that we'd like to understand why we were rejected, they had the ability to have a phone call, they had the ability to have an interview with the program officer, who is able to educate them on how to apply, how to put forward a stronger application. They came together in a very robust way to make sure that those organizations that wanted to put forward a better application were given that opportunity. One of the things, it's not a critique, but it's something that people are pleased with in the field, is that previously, organizations with budget sizes that were larger were only granted the opportunity for a multi-year grant. Now, those organizations that received a $10,000 grant, even those organizations are now given the opportunity to have a multi-year grant. So the multi-year is game-changing for the cultural community. It means that every year, you don't have to continue to start from scratch and render a new application each year. It means that each year, for those three years that you're awarded, and we're trying to get all the organizations into a three-year cycle for the multi-year grants, it helps our agency, it helps the field, it assists with getting money into the hands of the organizations quicker, and we are really proud of that.
And is there a breakdown, a public breakdown of the award differences from fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 that's available to both the city council and maybe the public?
Do you mean in terms of the amount of funding?
Yes.
So I have that in my testimony. So by comparison in fiscal year '19, the last full year before the pandemic, 985 groups received $51.3 million in CDF support. Comparing that to in fiscal year 2023, 1,070 cultural organizations received more than $58 million through the CDF process. So, the comparison is, and we don't like to, well, we can't really, because during the pandemic, we can't count those years, year by year, because we were at a finite amount of funding, and the grants continue to be allocated without an application or competitive review process. So we went from 985 groups to 1,070, and we went from $51.3 million to $58 million in the last fiscal cycle.
So, I do remember that in your testimony. I do understand that there were more organizations that are receiving funding through CDF. But in terms of individual organizations, year after year, is there a breakdown of, say, XYZ organization received a grant in fiscal year '23, and they also received a grant in fiscal year '24? Is there a public breakdown of the funding from the first year to the second year in terms of if it's consistent, if we've seen a change in funding? Is there any documentation on that for individual organizations through the CDF process?
Hi, Chair Ose. My name is Lance Pallavi, and I'm the General Counsel at the New York City's Department of Cultural Affairs. To answer your question, the fiscal year '23 data is currently available, broken down by group, and total amount of funding on open data. The FY '24 funding has not yet been announced, but that's the panel cycle that just wrapped up, and we look forward to continuing to work through the final steps and making a big announcement about all the groups that received that funding in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So when that data comes out, an organization could look at that document and then the document from '23 and compare the funding that they received from both years, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So I want to move on to equity and funding. BIPOC-led and BIPOC-serving organizations historically have had more difficulty securing stable and sufficient funding from all of these sources, which, you know, I know that you are aware of, Commissioner, in terms of your work in making these reforms. Should there be funds and grants either looped into the CDF process or separately that target BIPOC-led and serving organizations? I can ask that question again.
I was going to ask you. I was trying to process it. I was going with you.
It's okay. Should there be funds and grants either looped into the CDF process? And, you know, I know that, you know, more is more, and you can always do more with more, but in your opinion, do you think there should be dollars and additional grants looped into the CDF process, or should it be a separate type of process that targets BIPOC-led and serving organizations?
Well, I'm very proud, as we stated earlier, that 82% of POC-led organizations saw increases in their awards from the last grant cycle. And so, we're particularly proud of that because education is really the root of being able to fund more organizations. So our agency has made a lot of time and energy to educate, to provide more information, to help and support, and create more competitive applications all across the board. And the result of that is that we are now seeing more POC-led organizations are receiving more funding than ever before. It also goes in large part to the city council. Your ability to advertise or to have panelists that are reflective of our communities, that has also the ability to impact funding as well. So, it's a shared goal. If we're able to have all of the city council to further promote the panelists process and to get more panelists recruited in order to review the applications, that goes a tremendous way in terms of making sure that we have a more robust and diverse panel review process. And that's where you're going to be able to see the type of change that you would like to see in this process.
So basically, you would say that the way that the CDF process is set up, as it is today, there is a priority, or not a priority, but equity aspect in it in terms of funding and providing grants to BIPOC-led organizations?
Certainly. I mean, it's definitely a desire of our agency, a goal, to see more equitable funding all across the city. But we do this in partnership with the city council, and that's why initiatives such as Theaters of Color, that I was so proud to support, I was able to expand it with my colleagues from eight organizations to now over 50 organizations that are theaters of color are receiving funding. We were able to expand the CASA program from five CASAs to 17 CASAs. I was able personally, as a council member, to create the Art as a Catalyst for Change, to be able to put art programming and after-school centers in every community in which gun violence was impacting that community negatively. So these are the things that we can do collaboratively to make sure that more POC-led organizations receive funding. So the ability to support existing initiatives, the ability to expand existing initiatives, the ability to create initiatives where you see that gap is where the real magic lies. Your ability to create it, our ability to administer it, creates an opportunity for so many of those POC-led organizations to flourish.
Would you find it to be beneficial if there was a geographical distribution guidelines of some sort, that is a given number, a percentage of awards that should be guaranteed for each borough?
I have thought and considered that, right? And when you think about it in terms of its implementation, we can only really award grants through a merit-based process. That's one. Two, if you're having fewer organizations in each borough submitting applications, then we can't fund those organizations above and beyond either what they requested for their project. So an organization might be, let's say, for example, they might have applied for $10,000 to do a festival. If we were to organize and create a new program so that that organization that just applied for $10,000 now receives $50,000 because of the geographic criteria that we've created, but they are only an organization that has an annual operating budget of maybe $30,000, we would have to change our whole criteria because we only fund 75% of a project's operating budget. So 75% of the funding for the project that you requested, up to 75%, can be funded by the Department of Cultural Affairs. We cannot support organizations above and beyond their operating budget. There are so many things that come into play in terms of how we review applications. So geography is certainly important, and it's great to see that there's borough equity, but we also have to make sure that there's borough equity based off of population. We also have to have borough equity in terms of the amount of organizations that are applying. And just to give you some criteria on that, we are really very close to keeping within how many organizations are in each borough and how much funding those organizations receive. The way to create the level of borough equity that you're looking for is really, again, through the panel review process. If each member throughout the city council can recruit members of their community, of the cultural field, to be a part of this process, we could do so much more. We could make sure that we have every corner of the city well-represented. So we definitely need your help and support in providing that space for panelists.
Let's, and I know that we've been in talks about this in the past, but let's definitely be in lockstep about that during the next CDF process, just in making sure that that's at the top of every member's mind, so that they are putting forward individuals to be on that panel review process. Because I love how that's, that does create more equity in terms of geography and whatnot, but would love to prioritize that through the next panel process. I want to move on to ask, what are the demographics of the 125 first-time grantees?
Give me one moment. We do have that.
So for example, how many were from some of the outer boroughs? How many were BIPOC-led or serving organizations? How many were small organizations? Also want to acknowledge Councilmember Fadias, who's here.
Can you clarify the question? Because I want to make sure that what we're providing for you...
So I know that in the past process, 125 first-time grantees were awarded the CDF grant. I wanted to learn if there was a demographical breakdown on those 125 first-time organizations based on geography where they exist in the city?
I can give you geography.
Yeah.
I cannot give you demographic right now.
In terms of if they are BIPOC-led or whatnot?
Well, 82%, well, 82% of the full amount of organizations in the CDF process received an increase. Now, of those 125, I can get that number for you
Okay.
at this hearing, so give me a moment.
Yeah.
But geography-wise, new applicants funded in fiscal year '23 of the 125. Four new organizations from the Bronx were funded. Forty new organizations from Brooklyn were funded. Sixty-two new organizations from Manhattan were funded. Fifteen organizations from Queens were funded, and four new organizations from Staten Island were funded for the first time. Seventy-seven of the 125 organizations are BIPOC-led.
Okay. So, thank you so much for that info. And how many of those were small organizations? Would you say all of them, or?
We didn't look at it from the level of sizing, but I can get that for you.
But I, you know, I think referring to my last question on like geographical breakdown, and of course, there needs to be some synergy between the council and the members on pushing for a more diverse panel in terms of where panelists are coming from. But, you know, only four of those organizations being from the Bronx and Staten Island, like I'm sure that we are, you know, in agreeance here that there are plenty more organizations within the Bronx that are supplying great cultural work to the city of New York and the constituents that they serve. I think just having even that number and being able to, you know, know how many are coming out of those boroughs, comparing that to Brooklyn and Manhattan seems a bit unfair, right? So I think that, you know, we will definitely work with DCLA on making sure that there is more geographical diversity within the panel process and within those who are judging which organizations should receive those grants. And I want to make sure that my colleagues in the Bronx are aware, as well as, you know, Staten Island and Queens are aware, that they have a say in pushing for members to be a part of the panel. But I think also just having that communication on, you know, what this breakdown looks like is really helpful.
I want to make a correction, actually, to it that was just put forward. So it's actually 50 of the 125 are BIPOC-led, not 77.
Okay.
I think what could be really helpful in this, from my year and a half now of being Commissioner, so many of our BIPOC-led organizations that we know of, that we love, we all collectively have to do a much more robust job at preparing many of these organizations to apply for the Department of Cultural Affairs. I'm sure you experienced this in your district. You see these extraordinary cultural organizations. They're doing incredible work, and then they sit down and meet with you. They may not have their 501(c)(3) status. They may not have a board of trustees. They may not be incorporated. There are all these different things that prevent so many of our organizations that are doing the work, whether it's in a church basement, whether it's a block party, whether it's a youth program, or something of that sort. And I know I experience it a lot, too. We've got to do so much better to help prepare those organizations to be in the positions to apply. I know for myself, when I founded Mokata, I went through the New York Foundation for the Arts as my fiscal sponsor for a number of years until I could get myself into a place of, because once you get a 501(c)(3), you've got to have a bookkeeper, you've got to have an accountant, you've got to be able to pay people, you've got to be able to do all of this infrastructure in order to be as well-prepared as possible.
And is DCLA providing any of that service to, you know, organizations that would love some of that intel or would love to learn about how to become a 501(c)(3) or whatnot? I know that there are many different organizations and nonprofits that do that, but is there any work that goes into that from DCLA or from the agency?
So there's the Mayor's Office of Not-for-Profit Services that Councilmember Farah Lewis created. There's also, in our office, I would say personally, personally, I probably do two to three calls a week getting someone to that place of understanding how to apply. But I would also say the entire CDF unit, they do an extraordinary job of talking with organizations that want to apply but just never thought of how to apply, never heard of Department of Cultural Affairs. And sometimes, to be honest with you, the Department of Cultural Affairs... And sometimes, to be honest with you, the Department of Cultural Affairs may not be where you want to start. You may want to start with your local arts council first, get your feet wet, and to really learn how the arts council processes work. I know I did that for a number of years before I actually applied to Department of Cultural Affairs and then after that, the New York State Council on the Arts.
Is this information located on the DCLA website? Especially in terms of, like, I think that information is extremely helpful for some of these smaller organizations. Say you don't want to apply to the CDF process first. Is there a breakdown of some of these, you know, local arts councils that folks can find? Maybe even a map that exists on a website, does that exist?
That does not exist. I think that's an extraordinary idea to expand our websites and we could all expand our websites in order to provide that. And there's not going to be one-size-fits-all in this, but I do think that, you know, creating an initial roadmap of how organizations could do that would be great.
I 100% agree. I think like a roadmap and all of the information that you have and probably the conversations that you're having with these two to three organizations every week, having that documented and being on a website or any, you know, government document, I'm sure will make your job a bit easier, maybe a little bit easier.
I was thinking that.
Maybe that could be one call a week instead of two to three.
How you just keep going and you just keep going and then you're like, wait, we should stop and put this somewhere.
Exactly, and refer someone to a website that is clear, geographic-based in terms of like where their local arts council is, the information of those individuals. I think that would be a great idea to streamline a lot of the wealth of information that you and members of this agency have.
My general counsel would like to add.
Hi Chair Ose, we have additional data on the 125 new organizations that received funding in fiscal '23.
Okay.
Thirty-one of the 125 organizations have operating budgets under $25,000.
Okay.
So that gives you a sense of the smallest groups.
Thirty-one percent, yeah.
Forty-six of the organizations have budgets between $25,000 and $100,000. Seventy-six of the 125 are under $100,000. So you can really see that a majority of these 125 groups have operating budgets under $100,000 and really well under $100,000 who have been benefiting. The other thing that I wanted to add in terms of your questions is about funding based on borough. And one of the fortunate things is because this is a grant-based process, it's really a meritocracy where we're looking at the applications based on the strength of each and every application to award funding to the groups that are most deserving. And what we're proud of is through creating this merit-based process as a benefit of the reforms, that that has led to the democratization and it's also led to a very strong correlation between the number of groups that applied for funding and the number of groups that received funding. So when it comes to increasing the number of applicants that get funding from particular boroughs, we are so excited to work with this city council to try and push out the application deadline to each and every council district because the numbers we have so far show that if there were an increase in a particular council district by a bunch of applications, there would probably be more groups in that district that got funded.
Yeah. I hear you on that and I think we all could be doing a better job of getting the word out, right, on the opportunities that an agency like yours provides to cultural organizations and working in tandem with members. So when you are putting the application process out, say to the Bronx, which only had four new organizations receive CDF funding of the 125, can you talk to me about what the breakdown of communication with some of the members is? Maybe what some of the outreach is on getting the word out about the CDF process, if there is any at all?
Oh, there's, excuse me, there definitely is a robust outreach process. We use organizations such as our arts councils to get the word out. We make sure that I myself, as I've just stated, when I go out publicly to speak about this process and I'm crisscrossing the five boroughs each and every day, we're utilizing social media.
Okay.
We're using webinars. We are actively getting out there. We're sending toolkits regularly to your offices to get that information out. It's really a very robust process in terms of what we do to get the word out on a regular basis to make sure that we lift all boats in this process. I would say that there's only but so much that
Absolutely, yeah.
a commissioner can do.
I get it.
And that's a lot, right? But at the same time, I would say like our partners in terms of our local arts councils, but really the partnership with the city council is where the real magic can happen as far as getting the word out to those organizations that we may not know about, that you know are in your district that's doing incredible work. We do a series of CDF webinars that are really very powerful, very informative. But in every discussion, place that I go to speak, arts organization that I speak about, we encourage individuals to apply. And that's the reason we had almost 1,400 organizations apply, which was record-breaking, is because of that level of robust promoting.
That's great and I appreciate hearing that answer because as long as there is that infrastructure, a lot of it, you know, does lie on some other community partners who are leaders that could get the word out about this process. And, you know, I know in my office, we receive social media toolkits all the time. We do share this one, of course, but I'm sure that there are some that slip through the cracks, so.
And you could utilize ours or you could utilize yours because your social media star power far exceeds mine and I'm okay with it, right? So
Maybe we can do it together.
Oh, I mean, I'm not sure if I'm ready for that level of stardom, but I would certainly consider it.
I have one more question before moving on to a question from Councilmember Hanif, but what were the demographics of organizations who received multi-year funding?
Well, all organizations received multi-year funding.
Oh wow.
All.
Okay.
So that's been
Percent.
100% of the organizations. Lance will give you the real deal of what.
In terms of the multi-year awards, what we did was we split groups into three different bands because this was the very first year in FY '23 that any group was receiving a multi-year award. So one-third of the groups in FY '23 received a three-year award.
Okay.
One-third of the groups received a two-year award. One-third of the groups received a one-year award.
Okay.
But now, as we get into FY '24, anyone being considered who's a new group is only being considered for a three-year award. We needed an on-ramp to get into this multi-year process, but everyone is now in a cycle where they will be reviewed for a multi-year award.
Okay, but that doesn't, they'll be reviewed, but it doesn't technically mean that they'll get a three-year award?
No, and I'll check with our programs team, but I believe that anyone who now going forward receives an award or if you're a new group, your first award will be for one year and then going forward, you'll be eligible for a three-year.
Is that broken down in your open data documentation as well?
Yeah, it's in the guidelines.
Okay.
In the CDF guidelines that are posted on our website.
So we needed a process to get into multi-year or else if we implemented multi-year to everybody, then we wouldn't see them all for another three years, right? So it's got to be some get one year, some get two, some get three, and then they all start to operate. So the multi-year process is for the agency. It's for the entire agency regardless of grant size, but we needed to ramp up to getting to that place.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Hanif for questions.
And great to see you Commissioner Kumbo.
You as well.
And appreciate hearing all of the numbers and just the changes from last fiscal year to this fiscal year and just the coverage of organizations and the statistics on how many POC-led organizations are in the fold and of course, love hearing about the multi-year funding. That's something that I've been hearing for years, working with cultural organizations and I know that that is at least one less stressor off of their back.
That's right.
Could you share what the DCLA considers a small organization?
Let me pause just to get the exact budget size that we would consider because it may be beyond budget size as well. It may also be of the scope of the work or how many audiences are served.
Councilmember, the answer to your question is that one of the terrific reforms that we implemented was changing from a system in which we only had two different groups, large groups and small groups, to one in which we have six different budget bands. And in the guidelines, it describes how much you could be awarded based on your budget band so that there was a lot more detail and it could more closely match the size of the organization and the appropriate award for the organization.
Okay, that's great to know. That seems like it's an equitable parameter versus size of like staff or makeup. So that's really good to know and thank you for clarifying that. I wanted to know a little bit more about the panel review process. In addition to having this broad reach across the boroughs, are you also seeing that there are some parts of the city where we are not, where applicants are not coming from or that there is a need for arts organizations in these particular areas? And is DCLA advising on that front? Or is the panel giving any feedback on that front?
That's an excellent question in terms of areas where we are looking for deficits that we may have in terms of where our panels are coming from, panelists are coming from. I don't see in the talking points information about exactly where we have those deficits, but I know that we have panelists from all five boroughs. And I think we may be able to get you that information in terms of the borough breakdown, but not maybe by council district.
Well, Councilmember, are you talking about the breakdown in terms of the panelists in which communities they represent or the groups that are funded and the communities that they're serving?
Well, I'm actually grateful that the Commissioner raised the piece about the deficits of panelists, but I was actually asking what you just alluded to about organizations. Are you also seeing that there are neighborhoods or pockets of communities where applicants don't exist? Because there are no arts organizations or emerging groups, is there any support going towards that deficit?
So first, we can provide a little more information about the question that Commissioner Kumbo was answering about the panelists, which is that this year, for the very first time, we comprised a new initiative, which was a panelist advisory committee, a group of experts from the field to advise DCLA on how to do better outreach to a broader and more diverse set of communities for panelists. So that was a really helpful tool and one that we saw lead to dividends in FY '24 and we hope beyond as we continue to refine exactly what that advisory committee will do. But that was an explicit action that we took to really try to double down on increasing the equity within our panelists and the diversity of panelists that we were recruiting. In terms of services, we are thrilled to partner with each of the borough arts councils who we hope have a detailed knowledge of the neighborhood breakdowns of groups being funded, areas that need additional arts programming and that can help to point out any deficits and find ways to support then groups in those specific communities. So the borough arts councils are very helpful. The other tool that we have, that we've emphasized before, that we're excited to continue to work through is Commissioner Kumbo has a unique perspective, having been a prior council member, on what it's like to be a council member, to engage in your community, to know every nook and cranny, every block of your district. And we are so appreciative for the partnership that we got this past fiscal year from the council in terms of outreach to potential applicants, to panelists. And we know that an increased partnership in FY '25 can only lead to further dividends in identifying how we could find more arts organizations in your district that may want to apply. And we would love to work with you and all 51 members on that so that we reach every corner of the city.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And just to follow up, we can get you the actual breakdown by borough and areas where we feel that we need more help and support to reach panelists to help review the applications. So that's a great suggestion in that way as well.
Yeah, I'd love to support with that, thank you so much.
I know you've got some folks.
Can you please explain the timeline for the fiscal year '24 CDF grant-making? I know that applications were due on May 9th of this year, but what has been and will be the rest of the schedule for this funding cycle?
Thanks Chair Ose. The remainder of the schedule for this funding cycle is that the panels were convened in the late spring and early summer and there were 30-some-odd panels that reviewed applications. That panel process is now complete. And so now comes the arduous task for which we are so grateful to our programs unit at the Department of Cultural Affairs of reviewing all of the feedback, the data, the scoring, the comments from those panelists to then establish what the awards are going to be, to break them down by budget band. And this is no easy task. We are so appreciative and so grateful to the incredibly talented team that we have, but that will take another several weeks and we hope that we will be able to be making an announcement and sending out award letters in the coming weeks.
Do you have a specific date?
No, we do not, not yet.
Can you say what you said again?
For when?
Oh no.
And is, so there isn't a specific date every year or is it?
No, last year, the award letters went out in November. Yeah, in November and we hoped to be able to beat the timeline that we hit last year this year. We were able to start things a little bit earlier. We were able to take advantage of this new online application through our Salesforce platform. All of that helped to increase efficiency. As well as what we were explaining earlier about the multi-year awards, last year, we had to review every single group. This year, there are some groups on either the two or three-year cycle from last year, so we don't have to re-review those groups and that helps to speed up our timeline.
Is there a reason there's no hard deadline? Is that something that you guys are working?
In terms of why we don't have a hard day of when we're going to announce this year?
When you let folks know.
I think it's really what the general counsel spoke of in that coming out of the pandemic, there are so many new variables that we are dealing with, addressing in terms of, like the first one that we had to really deal with was the implementation of the Salesforce. This new software is new to the agency. It's something that we are working with, but it allowed us to streamline the process, but it was a whole new ballgame for us in terms of implementing new software for the entire field, for our agency, as well as our users who utilize that process. The other aspect of it is really what Lance said. Each year is going to get better once the multi-year process continues to kick in. So the fact that we had 600 organizations that we had to review this year, that number will probably drop next year to 300. So every year, once, because it's almost like we look at it as third, 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 and if we look at it as 1,000, the first year, we have to review all 1,000. The next year, we have to review 600. The year after that, we have to review 300. And then every subsequent year, we will be reviewing approximately 300 to 400 organizations. And while we're reviewing those 300, 400 organizations, we still have to read final reports from the organizations that are in the multi-year process. So just because you get a multi-year grant doesn't mean that we don't hear from you for a year. It just means you're reporting back to us how you utilize the funds that particular year and that still has to be reviewed. So it's a new process. As Lance stated, we are looking to beat the clock in terms of what we were able to issue next year. But we know on so many levels, this upcoming fiscal year, we are going to get the application out sooner. The deadline will be moved up so that that will be sooner. We're going to be reviewing fewer applications. We are going to have a full staff and team and we're going to be able to get funding out the door quicker and more effectively along with the city council delivering their initial along with the City Council delivering their initiative decisions in the end of June versus later in the year. And we're going to be...
Yeah. I guess the reason I ask and maybe why I'm concerned in terms of... And I hope that this is something that the agency is working on in the future in terms of having a specific day on when folks are... When everyone is realizing whether they received the grant or did not. It's because, you know, I've heard from, you know, especially smaller cultural organizations who are budgeting year-round, and even though, you know, their budget may be, you know, annual days sometimes, I think that, given the state of our city and country right now, budgets are tight for a lot of these smaller organizations. And I think getting that, having a specific day in mind of when they're... When they will know about this money that is much needed for their organization is something that I think will alleviate some anxiety, some stress, and then also allows them to plan a bit better for the new year. So I do hear that there is some acclimating on this new process, this process that I think is helping a lot of organizations. But I hope that we're working towards a goal of having a specific time when these organizations will know if they're receiving this grant or not.
That's exactly... I mean, we share that goal in terms of making sure that we get funding out the door as quickly as possible. And I would say that this agency has done everything possible to try to realize that goal. I just want to be 100% real in terms of you understanding. The implementation of Salesforce cuts the application from a two-part application to a one-part application. And that's huge, because we saw a significant drop-off in terms of organizations that didn't know that there was a part two they had to apply for, or just said, "You know what? It's too complicated. I just... Part one, part two, like, forget it." So the ability to have that streamlined process of one application is huge. That ability to be able to have the applications reviewed earlier, the ability to implement the multi-year, all of these things are going to continue to streamline the process and so that we can get funding out the door. Because we all want organizations to be able to plan more effectively and to not have to take that risk of beginning a program that they don't know if they're necessarily going to get funded for. And just again, I know I sound like a broken record in this way. We are going to do our part in partnership, but we also really need the council to... Like, this has got to be the year that, when the budget closes, we know how many CASAs each council member is designating, how many Sue CASAs they are designating, how many art is a catalyst for change? Because if we know that...
All this one talks about, I'm telling you.
Can I get an amen over here? Right?
And my budget director's here too. We get things in on time, right, May?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not feeling the confidence over here, but... It's critical, because I... Let me just tell you, from both fronts, I know now. One, as an arts organization, but now as a parent, right? When I sign my child up in September for after-school, that's it. I don't want to read any more emails. I'm not taking him out of that program to put him into that. Like, so if we... If those arts organizations don't know in June, July, that they've gotten a CASA, then they don't get those two months to plan with the principal and to work out those kinks, and then to advertise the program day one of September, whatever day we start school, that that's the after-school program my child is going to be in. If those organizations are awarded that CASA in November, I know from being an arts organization, they're going to be two kids in the after-school program, and we're administering this large CASA grant to them. So it's critical we get that funding out the door to really have the impact that we want it to have. And we do what we've got to do. You all do what you've got to do. The art world is going to be on fire, because we're going to be so streamlined, getting money out the door.
That's right, exactly.
And it's going to be fantastic.
You guys are... We're doing very well.
We're doing well.
We could just always be better, right?
Always be better.
And I think that, you know, we're voicing the concerns of what we're hearing.
And I'm here for it.
And this may be related to your last answer, but, you know, as your time in the council, you know, you obviously know that the programmatic discretionary funding application is in January, with applications due in February on our side, and most awards are made by June before the end of the fiscal year. This process gives, as council members and our staff, time to review applications and organizations. All of this that you know, why does DCLA start the CDF process later in the year? Is it because of us?
That would be such an easy yes to take, but I took an oath, so I'll answer differently. So due to the reforms and the implementation of Salesforce, as I stated earlier, we opened applications later this grant cycle. So this was really only because of the delays with Salesforce and learning this new software. For fiscal year '25, we will work towards returning to a timeline similar to our pre-pandemic grant schedule, with applications opening towards the start of the new year and panels being held in the spring. Once we have our panels happening in the spring versus the summer, that's going to change the whole process.
Absolutely.
Because if we get them completed in the spring, then those awards can be made earlier, June and July, and will be more in sync with the City Council. And that's our goal. We want to be in sync, and hopefully, we can have an offline conversation in terms of understanding your exact deadlines and goals and our exact deadlines and goals.
Let's just make them the same.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do it.
I got you on record saying that, so we're gonna... We're gonna just work in tandem and hand-in-hand to make it possible.
Wonderful. He's answered some of your... You just answered a lot of the questions I was going to ask. Should a new system be implemented to get awarded funds released much quicker to prevent organizations from having to borrow money to stay open and operate programs until the CDF money is distributed, which puts great pressure particularly on smaller organizations? And should more funds be released upfront? And is that possible?
Well, we release 80% of the award when the organization receives their award letter. So we get 80% of our fund...
Tell that. That's amazing.
Isn't that great? Look at that. So we make sure that organizations get 80% of their funding upfront, which is critical to us. Like we said, we're going to continue to have that sit down so that we can get in sync with one another, so that we can get our funding out the door at the same time as the City Council. And again, that 80% is critical, and we're going to just continue to work towards that goal. Now, the difference is, is that for initiative funding, it's 60%. That's why it's even more critical for that funding to go in sooner rather than later, because it's 60%.
Does DCLA provide any support either within DCLA or through referrals to small organizations that are short on funds?
Do we provide... Well, our local arts councils are really the sister to the work that we do. So our arts organizations, such as the arts councils within our portfolio, are where many other organizations go to for funding. But also, the New York State Council on the Arts is an incredible partner, where many organizations also go to for additional funding.
And since the city does recommend that organizations borrow money while they wait for promised funds to come through, can the city hypothetically provide interest-free loans to some of these organizations?
That, I think, is an interesting concept, one that we haven't explored at this time in terms of interest-free bridge loans, but we can certainly look into that.
Would that be something you'd potentially be supportive of?
I think there's a lot more exploratory that, you know... Would I like the whole city budget to go to the arts? Yes, but there's a lot that has to go into making a decision like that, right? You know, the Fund for the City of New York has been an incredible partner for us on so many levels. And so, interest-free is something that, of course, is attractive, but there are the mechanics and the realistic nature of how something like that could be implemented that we would have to explore and deliberate and weigh the pros and cons of that.
Thank you. In your testimony, you mentioned that in the fiscal year 2024, it was the first year where there was a full implementation of a CDF digital application. Did DCLA provide any accessibility support to organizations who needed help navigating through the new system? For example, making sure online application is accessible for people who are not well-versed in technology? And if so, how did DCLA provide those services?
We did an extraordinary amount of work to make sure that this process was accessible to the community. We have a disability leader within our office who was able to help us with the disability community. We also have an entire team of CDF staff team that was able to work with each organization through webinars to make sure that this was a robust, transparent, and that everyone who needed help or had issues with accessibility, that we were able to accommodate each and every organization.
And did this new application allow online applicants to track where their payments are in the system and help them predict more accurately when they will receive their funds? For example, like a little timeline of when they apply for their funds, a window of when they would hear back, and then also when those funds would be supplied to them if they received a grant?
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of your question.
Does this new application, this online application, allow applicants to track where their payments are in the system, as well as track where their application is in the process? So from when they submit their application, to when it's under review from the panel, to when they're receiving or not receiving funds, to if they receive funds, when they're receiving those funds?
It doesn't track in that way, but it's not as if organizations move through the system independently. So it's not like, once you have submitted your application, it's not like... Let's say if there are 100 applications, it's not like we would say to organization 69, "Your application has been read, and applicant 89, yours, has not been read." We kind of keep it all as one.
Yeah.
And then when the awards are made, then we announce them all collectively and together at the same time.
So I... Go ahead, yeah.
There are a couple of great resources. One is that during the CDF webinars that we do, we go over an anticipated timeline so that every applicant knows. They have the guideposts of, okay, here's where the application's going to open up, here's when they're due, and they can understand all of the key... Here's when panels will take place, so that they have a sense of what the timing will be for this process. The other answer, and someone that the Commissioner has brought up before, but I think their praises just can't be sung enough, is that each organization that applies is automatically assigned a DCLA program officer, who is their contact throughout the whole process from start to finish, including that afterwards, they can then seek out a one-on-one meeting with that program officer to better understand either why they didn't receive funding or to understand why their award was exactly what it was. And they can go through the answers that they submitted on the application, feedback from the panel, so that those groups get a better understanding of what they could do better the following year. So any organization that is uncertain about where their application is, if they have already signed their grant agreement, but they haven't received their initial payment, they should feel like they can always go to their assigned program officer. And that person is the personalized version of an online resource that they could punch into to find out where it is. In terms of their online payments, they have an online payment account that they can check as well. And so, that's something that, if they're not sure how to check that, they should contact their program officer who can give them all the information.
So just an idea, because I'm all about making government better and optimizing all of our time, including that, you know, individual that does one-on-ones with some of these organizations. Think about the same widget that, like, UPS uses. You order a package, you get a tracking code, it's sent to your email. What if there was a same type of thing on your website through the CDF process in which someone applies for an application, they receive a code, they're able to track the process in terms of when it comes to a panel? Just having more of a timeline within their own understanding, which I think would alleviate, you know, some stress for them, maybe some interactions that they have with DCLA as a whole, as well as, you know, reaching out to council member offices about where their application is going. And this is something I think that the council should replicate, of course, with our discretionary funding process, because, you know, we get all of these one-off requests of where our application is, but I think streamlining it in a digitized form in a, you know, program that already exists for many different companies, even, you know, government websites, I think could be a great service to this process.
Let me just ask you, because I think that's brilliant, right? Is this something that exists on the council side yet?
I'm saying this is something we should be doing on the council side as well. I'm... The State Assembly and the State Senate do something like this, but we definitely should be doing this on the council side, and I definitely think that DCLA should...
Because if you can do it, I mean, not to be like that. But if you could do it, then we could do it, then we could do it collaboratively. I feel like that should be like number two on the agenda item in terms of some sort of tracker system, I think. It would probably, no, it would definitely alleviate a lot of the anxiety that many organizations have in that way. But of course, we all know, these are things that require resources. So we would have to look into it, but we should look into it so at least we know what we're looking into in terms of what the cost or implementation could be.
It does require resources at first, and then it completely alleviates additional labor that goes into what you do throughout the year, right? In terms of, again, one-off organizations reaching out to your agency. I know DCLA isn't, you know, deeply staffed like some of the other city agencies, so I'm sure it takes some time for that individual point person to have these one-on-ones with many of the different cultural organizations of the status of their application. I think once that... Once a program like this is instituted, it's pretty automatic in terms of, you know, folks that can track where their application process is.
Would love to sit down and talk with you more about it. We just implemented Salesforce, and we're still recovering.
Yes.
But I like that you're pushing us to do more, as we should. And I look forward to definitely sitting down with the council to really discuss how we could move that forward.
And just an idea thrown out there, maybe you could be the first agency in the city that does something like that. That'd be really cool, you know?
No, it's great. Lance just reminded me, so... And I'm sure those, as we always say for the folks in the back, they can definitely relate to when you did your application back in the day. You'd have to go, you'd have to go to Kinko's, you'd have to figure out how to use their key card thing.
Go to where?
Kinko's. It's a... It's a... It's a printing company, right? So you would have to go to Kinko's, the line is crazy, it never works. You've got to get all these packets together. Then you get the packet, then you have to make a mad dash to the post office. It has to be postmarked by midnight.
I don't understand anything you're saying right now.
I guess that's why we can't relate right now, because I'm just like... So you would have to go to the post office and get it stamped by midnight, and the line... And it... The first line would be at the post office for me in Brooklyn at Cadman Plaza. If you miss Cad... In your local branch, so your local branch closes at 5:00. Cadman Plaza closes at 7:00 or 8:00. You miss those, you got to go to 34th Street. And you got to go to 34th Street by midnight. And if you miss those deadlines, you're really getting to the post office by about 11:50. Anybody that's in front of you is getting cut, right? Like, I'm in front of this line, like, I know you were waiting here, but I need this 12 o'clock deadline postmark. And then you would submit it, and then you would just pray for the best that it got in. But we have come a long way, and there's a much further way we are going to go with the leadership of Chair O'Shea.
In partnership with Commissioner Combo.
There we go.
And Lance.
That's right. They get us right.
You state in your testimony that the three main criteria the panels can look for is accessibility of the org/programming for New Yorkers, organizational accountability, and the quality of the programming provided. Can you break down on what factors you look for in order for an organization to meet these criteria?
Can you ask the second part of the question again?
Can you break down on what factors you/the panels look for in order for an organization to meet these criteria?
Yes. So we look at organizational accountability, meaning if we invest public funds in this organization, does it have the capacity to deliver the programs it promises for New Yorkers? So when we look at that organizational accountability, we're really looking to see if the organization has past experience, has outlined how much staffing, what is a reasonable budget? Have they thought about these things in terms of implementing the project? Then, we look at the first two criteria, and those account for 85% of an organization's score. So we really want to make sure that the final criteria is quality. Is the programming of a caliber that will serve... of a caliber that will serve our residents well. So it's really important that we demonstrate and show that the program is accessible, affordable, and that it's providing equity for New York, for everyday New Yorkers. So accessibility really refers to in so many different ways where we're trying to move New York City, as far as making sure that all people, whether you're from the disabled community, economically challenged, whatever your religion may be, that this is an accessible place for you. Affordability, can you come? Are there opportunities for you to be able to come to this program for free or to reduce costs? It's always so important for us that so many organizations have free days, that they have reduced ticket prices, pay as you wish, that they have opportunities and spaces for the disabled to enjoy the programming, such as many from our autistic community. These are the issues that are really important to us in terms of how we judge, or rather review, the panel, the applications that come to our office.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, is anyone else cold in here?
Yes.
Can we turn the heat up in here?
I'm comfortable, but I guess that's because I'm in the hot seat.
A little cold.
Thank you, that's what I needed.
Okay, let's move on. In your testimony, you said that there was an additional round of panel conversation. Can you tell us more about what is deliberated on during this additional round?
Well, this came out of the field as a result of listening to the field, Culture at Three calls, and really recognizing that we wanted to add a more robust aspect to the panel review process. So we added an additional round of deliberation to make sure that the final outcome of the applicant from the panel process was actually re-reviewed, so that people would make sure that this is exactly how they lined up, that what they felt about that organization was based more on the application and the work, and not maybe where that application was reviewed at that time of day, right? So when you review applications before lunch or after lunch, can affect how you decide. If you've read 10 panels, if you've reviewed 10 applications, and now this is the 12th, you may have a little bit of fatigue. So we wanted to make sure that we created an opportunity that after those deliberations happened, that there was yet an additional round, so that people could look at the process from a more objective view to say, is how I felt at that moment, or how I reviewed at that moment, how I truly feel about this application in the aftermath? And Lance can also expand on that.
The final round of discussions is because first, there's an individual review of that application. After an individual has done their review, then the panel does a review of the application. During the course of the day, the panel has robust discussion about each of the applicants and their applications. And so finally, what this additional round does, is it allows the panel to review the question and to think through, did the score reflect the discussion? And that's what this does. It gives everyone an opportunity to go back and look at the scores one more time and say, is the score that I gave during panel review reflective of the discussion that we all had, to make sure that each panelist can learn from the perspective of the others who are in the room?
And how long is each application reviewed in this additional panel?
Ask that question again?
How long is each application reviewed in this additional panel?
Give us one moment.
So, first of all, a panel is convened for an entire day. They sit and they're in a virtual Teams or Zoom room from about 10 o'clock in the morning till the end of the workday. It allows for about one hour for each application, their additional six-minute discussion blocks to go further into each application.
One hour per application?
So during a panel, the panel will review several different groups.
Okay.
So if they can review eight groups? Individually, it's one hour, collectively, six minutes. So during, these panelists, they have to review hundreds of pages of materials to come in and be fully prepared. And they...
I'm confused. Individually, like, the panel reviews one application for an hour? Or six? I'm confused.
On their own at home, they are required to spend at least one hour with each individual application. Then they come together, and collectively, they do these six-minute blocks for each application.
Okay.
So we are, we pay panelists, and that's one of the things that we're so proud of. We were actually able to increase the total amount that we pay each panelist through the reforms. And by doing that, what we enabled was to have a group of panelists who would be able to come if they weren't paid to go to work. And to pay a fair wage for a full day of engagement in this process was critical to us as an agency. We knew that that would increase the equity of the people that could serve as panelists, and we're really proud that that came through. One of the other expectations of panelists by being paid more is that they're going to spend a lot of time at home reviewing before they get into the room. They don't show up and say, oh, which applications are we looking at today? The expectation is they're going to have spent at least a full hour looking at each application for each group that they're going to be considering during the full-day panel.
Okay, so like, individual panelists will receive an application, and they'll review that application from an organization for an hour. And say that happens with the entire panel, but with different applications, correct? And then they all come together with all of those different applications for six minutes? And decide?
Per group, yeah.
Okay. Is that enough time, those six minutes?
Yeah, yeah. So we have one of our assigned program officers serving as a moderator of virtually all of the panels, and they do a tremendous job of keeping everyone on task. You would be amazed at how quickly the day flies. We'd love for you to sit in on a panel at some point.
Yeah.
To see how this all works and to...
Sure.
To see the choreography of having it all come together.
Yeah.
They are absolute wizards at keeping the clock, keeping everyone moving, because there's no way they're going to let that day elapse without everyone having had their opportunity for full engagement and an adequate opportunity for their application to be heard.
And I understand that city council staff previously served on the review panels in a voluntary capacity. Why are they no longer invited to do so, and is that invite still open?
You are more than welcome to make recommendations for panelists to be a part of this process. So you can absolutely go to your community board meeting, you can go to your police precinct council meeting, you can go to your church, your synagogue, or your mosque and say, the Department of Cultural Affairs is looking for panelists to be a part of this process to decide how funding is going to be allocated in the city of New York. We absolutely encourage that. But the nature of why that question was asked, when I was a cultural leader, my city council member would appoint me to serve on panels. What we wanted to do was to move this process to a merit-based process, right? So we wanted to make sure that organizations that were going to be reviewed, were going to be reviewed solely on the merit, on the discipline, of the quality of the work, of the accessibility, right? And we wanted to do that because so many organizations may not be as politically astute as other organizations, and we didn't want that to impact their application. And so if we get 100% real about it, if a city council member is able to tell their budget director, "I want you to serve on this panel," that budget director is obviously going to advocate for the organizations in their district, right? And so if you're not from that district, or you're not in that council member's purview, that's going to skew the application review process, because now you have someone that may, potentially, because they have so much more familiarity about their specific district, and everybody wants their district to win, that it becomes challenging in a process where we want it to be exclusively based off of the merit. And so we're hoping that the council, as well as the field, who actually called for this, to make sure that this is a merit-based process, that it's exclusively the hard work, the quality of the programming, the accessibility of the organization that's coming forward.
And in the past, there have been, there have also been borough-based review panels for smaller organizations. Is that still done?
So borough-based would happen more within your local arts council. We've decided to move, and it wasn't always exclusively borough-based, but we decided to move to a way of reviewing that's based off of discipline, but also discipline and the size of, the budget size of the organization. Because we don't want BAM going up against the smaller, not-for-profit, creative outlet dance company, right? So Creative Outlet and BAM shouldn't be competing at the same level for their award amount. We wanted to make sure that similar-sized organizations of a similar discipline are being reviewed by panelists who have expertise in that discipline, as well as those smaller-sized organizations. So we thought that that was more powerful in that way, and more equitable to do it in a way that's by discipline and budget size. Because if not, the bigger organizations are competing with the smaller organizations. And just because you're from the same borough, doesn't mean that you know about something positive African dance organization, and that you know about Mark Morris. It doesn't necessarily mean that you know both, or that you know about, you know, it's, just because you're all in the same borough doesn't mean that you know of all of the disciplines within that borough. So we wanted it to be more discipline-based versus, discipline and size-based versus borough-based.
And according to your testimony, 47% of the panelists were first timers. What training did they receive through DCLA?
They receive extensive trainings through the Department of Cultural Affairs. We do a webinar, we also do a training for each of the panelists, and it's a very robust training session to make sure that every panel, every panelist is well-prepared and equipped, and that they meet the criteria of the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs, and that we make sure that they are able to read the applications and to make the determinations of which organizations should be recommended for funding. It's a very robust process. We're super proud that so many went through this application review process in terms of how to be prepared to review an application. And as the general counsel said earlier, that they are expected to do a lot of homework internally before they even get to the application review day. So it's a real robust process, and we're happy that so many participated.
And I do want to raise this, because someone just called my office, I guess because they're listening to the hearing, and they said that there wasn't any home time for the panel process. It was six minutes with a countdown clock, and then 30 seconds to write comments, then a lunch break, and a return to the applications. They said that there was no talking about each application again in a robust way. Is that a critique that you've heard from panelists or applications? Or is that something that is addressed through a staffer from DCLA who is, you know, attending? What do you think of that comment?
No, we appreciate that type of comment. We appreciate the feedback. We continue to look for ways to improve the process. That was not a criteria, excuse me, that was not a critique that we had received prior to. It is in part, though, why we do have a additional round, so that that level of discussion can happen through the process, but that critique had not been brought to our attention previously. And so I appreciate it.
Yeah. What is the appeals process? Is there an appeals process?
There is an appeals process. I'm going to let Lance talk a bit more about it from a legal perspective, but we certainly do have an appeals process, where organizations are able to make an appeal if they don't agree with their award amount, or the fact that they were not funded. And we meet with each and every organization who feels that. But generally, the awards, the appeal process is opened up if we feel that an organization, or not if we feel, it's not a feeling, it's only if they're not funded. We will open up the process if an organization feels that the materials that were required for review were not submitted as part of their application. So if there are materials that were not submitted, that's one way that you could be allowed to open up an appeal process. But I'll let Lance speak more of the legalese on it.
Of course. Appeals are allowed for any organization that does not receive any funding. And if you do not receive any funding, you can appeal on one of two grounds. The first of which is if you believe the materials that you submitted with your application were not appropriately distributed to the panelists. So for example, if there were a mistake, and instead of your materials, a different group's materials were the ones that were sent to the panelists. Or if you submitted answers to all of the questions, but only the first half of your answers were distributed to the panelists. The other grounds for an appeal is a conflict of interest. If there were a conflict of interest on the panel that were not disclosed at the time, that's another ground for appealing a lack of funding for an organization. So it's a very limited process.
Okay.
And it, that's what it is.
Is there a percentage that you guys have, or a breakdown of folks who have appealed and have received, I guess they're, received money, received a CDF grant?
I don't have those statistics in front of me, but I can tell you that there are very few appeals, because there are so few that meet that criteria.
Okay.
And there are even fewer that are granted, because for us to not distribute the correct materials, or for there to be a conflict of interest, is very, very rare.
Sure. You mentioned the safety net funding before, and the CDF award letters listed many different funding streams. Safety net, zip code, panel score. What do the different funding streams mean, and how can organizations navigate the funding system effectively to access them? Specifically, what does safety net and zip code mean?
Well, we implemented safety net as we were implementing the reforms. So the reforms were implemented in such a way that more organizations were applying for funding, more organizations were granted funding, and we also raised the floor from $5,000 to $10,000, which meant that there was going to be a reduction that many organizations were going to see as we try to equalize the funding pool, to make sure that many organizations, particularly those that were not funded previously, have that opportunity to receive funding. So while that process was being implemented, we didn't want to reduce funding at such a level that it would be detrimental to that organization. We wanted to allocate a level of safety net funding, so that organizations would have time to be able to adjust and to figure out new ways to raise that funding, whether it's independently foundations, corporations, or changing their business model in some ways to accommodate that. So we wanted to make sure that we gave organizations time and space in order to be able to implement their programming in a fair and equitable way to their constituents, but having that time to make that adjustment.
I want to talk a little bit about DCLA staffing. How many contracts does each contract officer oversee?
As it pertains to the CDF process?
How many groups per, 170?
Oh.
Okay. And is there enough DCLA contract officers to provide sufficient feedback to CDF applicants who do not receive a grant and want to know where their application fell short?
I feel confident that we have the staffing and the team to implement the goals that we've outlined in today's hearing, and we have the staffing and the team to be able to move the application process in a more streamlined way, and to be able to get applicants through that process in a more effective and streamlined way. I believe that that adjustment of reviewing the applications in the spring instead of the summer is really where you're going to see the real accessibility. um, instead of the summer, is really where you're going to see the real, uh, accessibility and money out the doors quicker in a more robust way than ever before. And I believe that we have the team to do it.
And, and do you believe that there are enough DCLA contract officers that provide support to CDF, CDF grantees, such as help with distributing payments in a timely or manner?
I believe that we have a robust team that has done extraordinary work, and I have full confidence in this team and their ability to move contracts and to get money into the arts organizations that have applied for funding.
So you think there's enough staff for how this process is in terms of the amount of contract officers that you have?
Of course. I mean...
You want more?
We would always want more, right? But, you know, we want to be realistic in terms of saying, we have a goal. I know we will meet our goal. We've implemented Salesforce. We've got that going. We have the multi-year process in play. That's happening. We're going into the third year of that cycle. Once we hit the third year of that cycle, and organizations are coming into the cycle in a way that we only have to review three to four hundred grants versus a thousand, that's going to make a dramatic difference. And I'm very confident that with the team that we have, Salesforce implemented, the ability to review applications in the spring versus the summer, that's really going to be game-changing, and I feel that we have the dynamic team in order to do that.
You mentioned earlier that the fiscal year twenty-three fiscal data is available. I know folks from the cultural community have told me that they cannot find it on open source. Where can we find the fiscal year twenty-three data? Do you have like a specific link or location that we could send out or say on the record?
We're happy to follow up with you after the hearing and provide you the link, but it's available on open data.
And do you think it would be helpful for a task force to be empowered to review the CDF process and provide recommendations? Or would that be...
I mean, we have implemented something very similar to what you're discussing in order to review. This wasn't an independent, um, this wasn't an independent implementation. So there is currently, uh, a task force that's reviewing how we are, um, implementing the CDF process. Uh, the general counsel can speak a bit more to that, but yes, that's in place. Do you want to add to that?
Chair, can you please repeat the question?
Sure, yeah. Um, I said, should a task force be empowered to review the CDF process and provide recommendations? Just for a level of oversight over the, the process in which it stands.
We are open to feedback from wherever it may come. I would say that the reforms that were implemented in fiscal year twenty-three were the result of many listening sessions with the community, um, and with the field, and that all of the feedback that we received, which informed the recommendations at the center of the reforms, were critical to making this the best process possible. At this point, we're focused on trying to implement those reforms in the best way possible. We learned lessons from FY twenty-three that we apply to FY twenty-four, and I know we're going to learn even more from FY twenty-four that will apply to FY twenty-five. So before we do our next full, um, report or listening cycle, um, with the field in the way that we did for the cultural plan, I, I think we want to give these reforms a few years to see how they go, but it is so helpful to always be hearing information from the field, and we welcome testimony today, and we look forward to hearing all of it.
What about the mayor's cultural advisory committee? Could they play a role in, in providing some of that, that oversight?
We are reconstituting the advisory committee, changing a few members out and adding a few new members. But on the advisory committee for the CDF funding, there is someone from the committee that serves on that task force that oversees the process.
Thank you. Uh, art service organizations are unique from other cultural organizations. Art service organizations do not produce art, but rather they provide a service to arts and cultural organizations. Yet they are often lumped into the same pool of applicants and do not receive the same amount of funding as their art slash culture counterparts. In a sector survey, sixty-five percent of art service organizations reported a funding cut in CDF this year. Do you know how many art service organizations applied, and how many received cuts in total?
Chair, I would say, I don't have the exact number of art service organizations that received cuts or received funding. What I can tell you is that there are a variety of types of organizations that apply for CDF funding that are not just producing and presenting organizations. Panelists are knowledgeable of the field, and they're able to evaluate applications from all that apply. And so, we have the, um, the tools, the technical wherhow, and the ability to review all applications, including from art service organizations, and we look forward to partnering with them more in the future.
Are, are art service organizations scored on the same rubric as other organizations during the panel process?
Yes, they are.
Pardon?
Yes, they are.
And do you think they should be?
I think they should be reviewed in a similar way to, by their peers in the same way. While they do do something that's a bit nuanced or different from the other arts organizations in the panel, I believe that they, being reviewed by their peers, I think is also equally as important.
How, in, in your words or in your recommendations, can art service organizations make their applications to be as competitive in a field with programmatic organizations?
I don't have any particular recommendations for art services organizations as opposed to any others here today. We're, we're happy to follow up with, with more information. But what I would say is that the best experts to help each individual art service organization is to contact their assigned program officer to go through their FY twenty-three application, and soon enough to go through their FY twenty-four application with their program officer to really receive the feedback, to hear what the panel was thinking and saying, and to give them tailored recommendations for FY twenty-five. We would love to see as many art service organizations as possible receiving robust funding and being able to serve their communities.
But you three up here build out like the infrastructure that these program officers are, are using, right? As a rubric to decide which organizations are receiving funding or not. Is there any ounce of wisdom that you would, uh, give to, to some of these art service organizations that...
I would say, so, we do programmatic funding, so that's a large part of what the Department of Cultural Affairs is about. I think it's really important for organizations, as we spoke about, to hit the pillars, to make sure that as they're doing this level of service providing, that it's accessible, that it's equitable, that they're reaching new audiences, that they are helping in the way of servicing new communities, that there's language accessibility, that there are, uh, different ways that they are reaching the disability community. All the ways that you can show, that you are really drilling down in terms of, you know, finding those new communities or audiences that have never been represented before, or that need help or support in a way that we haven't quite discovered. That's really the kind of work that, you know, that we want to do to make sure that every corner of New York City is being serviced, and that some organizations are finding more innovative ways to do that. But also that organizations are taking into account the climate that we're living in right now, that we are faced with so many different challenges in terms of affordability, housing, education, uh, the challenges that we're facing in terms of being a more humane nation, um, in terms of, uh, meeting and addressing and servicing our asylum seekers, and making sure that they are part of New York City and that they are welcomed. So there are so many things that we can do, but I would say the main thing is really looking at the city and what the challenges are that are facing the arts community in New York City right now, and finding innovative ways to address it.
I, I want to hear from you if you think it would be possible, and even something that, I wonder if you'd be on board with this, but, but do you think that arts organizations, art service organizations, uh, should have their own category of funding? Because their work is not the same as art-producing, presenting, and teaching organizations, and they cannot easily answer the same questions on the CDF application?
I will say that I appreciate you asking this question. This has not been a concern that was raised to my attention up to this point. So I'll definitely, I'm sure you're asking this, because this is something that you're hearing from the field that was not brought to my attention. So I look forward to looking more into it and, and hearing more about this, and like ways that, I mean, we always want to discover ways that we can further assist and support the community, and if there's something that we're doing that's not making or addressing the field in the appropriate way, we want to know about it, we want to discuss it, we want to remedy it, so that we can, um, provide more effective service to those that, um, come to us for guidance.
I appreciate that. Uh, the mayor announced a fifteen percent cut for all agencies. Will this proposed cut impact the CDF process in any way?
Well, we've just recently received a PEG, uh, exercise letter, maybe just within the last week. So we haven't quite reviewed how this is going to impact our agency, but, you know, look, we are going through very uncertain financial times right now, and there's a level of uncertainty that we're all facing currently, but we want to continue to move forward. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that the organizations, um, that apply and come to us for funding, that we are able to continue to, uh, provide a robust level of support for art organizations. But at the same time, we also have to recognize the financial uncertainty that we are walking into, um, at this particular time.
I, I want to go back to, um, the CDF process. Uh, just a quick question. I've heard that DCLA has refused to give applicants their panel scores, um, and some of these organizations have reported that it's hard to determine how much panel scores impact their funding decisions. Um, how much do panel scores impact funding allocation decisions for DCLA?
Panel scores are a critical component of funding. After the reforms, so are the bands in which each organization lies. Uh, an organization with an annual operating budget of fifty thousand dollars or less is not going to be eligible for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar award, no matter what. So I think these six new bands help to create a greater degree of certainty, and then the scores that you receive help to determine whether you're going to get an award and what that award will be. Having these guidelines with the bands and the anticipated allocations, I think really helps to give all of our arts organizations a better idea of what their funding might be. And yes, the scores are a critical piece in determining where they will be within that band and whether they will receive funding.
What is your vision for CDF for the next three years? And, and how can it achieve greater equity and sustainability for our cultural ecosystem? That's the macro question.
That's the, that's my dissertation right there. I would say that I'm really pleased with the aspect of the multi-year funding to give organizations more stability in terms of being able to plan year to year with the multi-year grant. I think that that was huge. Um, I think that there's so many things that I would like to, there's so many things that I would like to see with CDF. I mean, I'd, I always put myself in the place of being a founder of the Museum of Contemporary African Diaspora and Arts, and thinking in that space what it was that I really wanted out of the CDF process. And the first thing that the CDF process did for me, which I really kind of, I would say in some ways, the first thing that I took for granted, especially when I travel to other countries, right? The fact that I was twenty-two years old, out of graduate school, with a master's thesis on how to build Brooklyn's first black art museum, that I could apply to the Department of Cultural Affairs to say, "I want in on this cultural landscape of New York City, and I've got a thesis, and I want to build a multimillion-dollar state-of-the-art, black art museum in Brooklyn, and I want the Department of Cultural Affairs to fund this museum upwards of the fifty million dollars that I have stated that it should be funded at, and I wanted it right then and that year." Twenty-five years later, um, the museum is moving into its first real, real, permanent home in that way, and it took a long time to get there. So the first thing that I'm proud of in this CDF process is that it makes room, and it makes space for new ideas, new twenty-two-year-olds with graduate theses who want to change the cultural landscape. But just to be frank and honest, I think that the way the process operates, we need to do more to develop more public and private partnerships so that there is a higher level of robust funding, and we need to have more foundations and corporations, and perhaps even individuals, to create and expand the pool so that there is more funding for those twenty-two-year-olds and those organizations that have been, who created words like diversity, equity, and inclusion. There are cultural institutions in New York City who created BIPOC and POC, and some of them don't even like that terminology, right? They were at the forefront of creating, um, the dynamics that we are living in right now. And so, I think the only way that we can really do this is to create more public-private partnerships in order to expand funding for the entire city of New York. I feel that the foundation, cultural, and corporate worlds work in their own silos, and I feel like it's really important that we come together, because the crises that the art community is facing on a lot of levels is that foundations and corporations change their funding, um, parameters and their views on a very regular basis. So many foundations, corporations, they're changing their funding missions from the arts to many other different fields. And I think that we should be in tandem, because we've built a pie, basically, of how we fund culture in the city of New York. And it's important that we know that we're dependent upon each other for that pie, and that we all have to do our part in order to recognize that whatever the funding new thing is that corporations and foundations are, are saying that they now want to fund, it can all still be, it can all still be through the arts. The arts are education. The arts are healthcare. The arts are social justice. They are all of those things. And so we need to be able to partner in a more robust way to say, "We have to work together. We have to expand this pie. We have to have similar missions, and we have to be consistent with those missions, because we have created a multi-billion-dollar industry in the city of New York that, guess what? Everybody's existence is dependent upon this existence together." So we've got to work together to more collaboratively create that.
And guess what, Commissioner? That was my last question. You're awesome. I'm so grateful for, for you in the role that you're in. I'm sure you hear that, that often, but you and the folks at DCLA are doing just a fantastic job. Um, and I'm hoping that, you know, through this hearing and some of the hearings that we've had prior, um, some of the advice, ideas, um, my office is open to continue working on those with, with you all. Um, and I'm hoping to see some of those come into fruition, but you're doing a fantastic job.
And you are also doing a fantastic job, and I, I would say I appreciate these hearings, because a lot of good ideas come out of them. I don't have the ego of like, "That's a horrible idea, because you said it." Like, you have great ideas, and you come forward with a lot of things that we need to further collaborate on. And, um, I look forward to our part two offline, so that we can continue to have these conversations. But I want to acknowledge Helene at this time. Um, Helene has been the CDF Programs Officer. I want to acknowledge her especially because she brought this CDF process through COVID, the pandemic, not operating in person, still keeping this train running while we were facing one of the most uncertain and challenging times. She has also dealt with all of the challenges that we've all dealt with, with COVID, but also having to take care of her family at this time, which is why she is taking time away from this position in order to care for her family. And so, she has really kept this train going and made sure that this process was more robust, more equitable, and funding so many new... And funding so many new organizations for the first time is really a huge part of her legacy. So I just want to say thank you for that and all the work that you have done and continue to do and continue to make sure that we are implementing the best, most robust CDF process. That as we continue to collaborate, this is really going to be a model for the rest of the nation. And I want to acknowledge Andrea. Andrea Louis is coming to us as our new Program Officer for CDF. Many of you may know her from the Asian American Arts Alliance. She's, she's our Assistant Commissioner. And I'm happy to have both of our former and current CDF Commissioners, Assistant Commissioners here today. And you all will be hearing a lot more from them in their prospective fields. So I want to thank them. I want to thank the whole CDF team for being here today. And I just want to give you all a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Christina, take it away.
Thank you, Chair. We will now turn to public testimony. Just a reminder, we will be limiting public testimony today to two minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. Now I will call our first in-person panel, Lucy Sexton, Fran Garber Cohen, and Gregory King. You may begin when ready.
Sorry, since my computer just decided to die, maybe I could get my written testimony back. Sorry about that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Ose and members of the City Council for this important hearing. My name is Lucy Sexton. I'm with the Cultural Advocacy Coalition, New Yorkers for Culture and Arts. The reforms to the CDF, as we've been hearing, were aimed at advancing equity in city funding. And there were many successes on this front. However, an applicant pool of more than 1,300, an estimated of an applicant pool of more of, as we just heard, 1,400, an estimated 35% received cut or no funding from CDF. Many of these groups that had long received funding, including many invaluable arts service organizations and legacy organizations of color. The fact that this news was delivered in late November, halfway through the fiscal year, meant that those organizations were unexpectedly plunged into deficits for FY '23. DCLA stated that this was a pilot year for the reforms and the community suggested many ways to reform the CDF process to better achieve the agency's goals of equity. Too many of those suggestions were not heated and the process continued largely unchanged for the current year. The DCLA must first and foremost have more money to run the agency. So much of what injures smaller culturals and the sector as a whole is due to lack of capacity. With very few program officers handling, as we just heard, 170 each of grantees, it's just not enough with the funding decision taking far too long and destabilizing the sector by announcing grants far into the year because they do not have the capacity to process them faster and with a lack of transparency that is exacerbated by lack of staff capacity to provide data and information in a timely manner. The DCLA must also have proper oversight mechanisms by which the community's concerns can be heard and the agency can be held accountable in answering them. There is a nominal cultural advisory committee that can and should be given a clear mandate via legislation from the council that would require regular meetings with the agency that lead to accountable responses. Finally, I join my colleagues in asking for the following reforms to CDF. We ask the grant schedule start earlier so the grant letters can go out earlier. We ask that DCLA clearly explain the available funding streams so we can navigate the system. We ask that DCLA create a dedicated fund for arts service organizations. We ask the panel process be restructured. You will get feed, more feedback from people who are on the panels this year. It did not go well. It was short-circuited. And we ask that the appeals process be reformed to made more transparent and accessible for any organization with a legitimate grievance, especially ones that didn't receive any CDF funding, who were currently not allowed to appeal as they'd received a couple thousand dollars in council member discretionary. I'll stop there, but the full list of recommendations is in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, Chair Ose and the Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Gregory King and I'm the General Manager for Programs and Partnership at Dance NYC, a service organization advancing the interest of the dance industry in the metropolitan NYC area. We serve diverse constituents and are supporting the nation's dance capital from classrooms, parks and parkways to living rooms, studios, and stages. Today, we acknowledge that there are challenges to keeping New York City's dance institutions functioning and capable of providing a fair and equitable wage for its dance workers. I want to be clear, solutions to these problems require funds like the CDF to responsibly distribute support. To that end, we advocate for an earlier start to the grant schedule with award letters by August 1st with timely payouts. We advocate for the creation of new separate budget lines for dance service and dance education organizations to create specific inroads and to not, I repeat, not compete with presenting and producing entities. We advocate for restructuring of the panel process to A, more successfully distribute funding across the geographic landscape of the city; B, include more time for discussions of applications; and C, ensure that panels are more interdisciplinarily represented. We advocate for the release of timely and accessible data on the distribution of CDF funds awards to facilitate more transparency. We advocate for the prioritizing of communities and projects that are consistently under-invested in the process, the award process. This includes the disabled, immigrants, and BIPOC projects. These recommendations are built on our own experiences and from a 2023 CDF Impact Survey that Dance NYC conducted with Art NY, which revealed in part that 26% of arts service organizations in dance received decrease in funding and 31% of art education organizations in dance also increased, received decrease in funding. Dance NYC will continue our commitment to research with the soon-to-be-released Dance Industry Census finding. I'll close by saying, if we weaken our cultural sector, we lose the heart of what makes the city a beacon to those who uphold it, who visit it, and aspire to be a part of it. We ask that you listen to us and our arts and culture colleagues to create a more sustainable and thriving sector. Thank you on behalf of the dance workforce of New York City.
Good afternoon. Thank you for considering my testimony today. I'm Fran Garber Cohen, President of Regina Opera, which offers fully staged operas with full orchestra and English subtitles in Sunset Park, an underserved and low-income community, as well as many free concerts in public, accessible spaces in Brooklyn. We rely heavily on funding from the New York City Department of Cultural Affairs. The funding that we receive through the Cultural Development Fund allows us to provide affordable, professional-level entertainment in accessible venues for people who may not otherwise attend live performances. And today, I join my colleagues in asking for some of the following reforms to the CDF. We ask that the grant schedules start earlier so grant letters can go out August 1st. That will assist us in planning for the upcoming season. And then we ask that the payments are made quickly to help us with cash flow. We also request that the DCLA create a dedicated funding stream for art services organizations so that they are not competing with arts-producing and presenting organizations. We ask that the DCLA reevaluate the budget size tiers and award amounts and create new and narrower tiers so that organizations are competing against peers of similar sizes and award amounts are better reflective of the relative size of the organizations in the tiers. We ask that the DCLA use an online tracking system so that organizations can know where their funds are in the process and can better predict when they will arrive. The full list of my recommendations are in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy, on the Culture at Three calls, what has been the general feedback on the CDF process from call participants?
Basically, the feeling is that it destabilized the sector. And it came in, because it came late, it really upended everybody who was sort of anticipating that they might get what they sort of had been getting the last few years. And of course, lots of people were happy. Lots of organizations that had long gotten a very low level of funding got increased for the first time. So that was great. But, you know, Sophia Harrison of Arts House School who got an increase, but she said right at the beginning, if you're going to up the level of what the minimum grant is, if you're going to expand the number of people who come in, you're going to need more money or it's going to come from somewhere. And it did indeed come from somewhere. It came from cutting organizations that had long received it and were deserving of it. So I think the main feeling was that it was destabilizing and therefore, the good things that it achieved couldn't be celebrated as fully as it might have been because others were injured.
And what are some reoccurring problems and concerns that you hear from participants on Culture at Three?
You know, we hear a lot about transparency and data, an ability to, how are we navigating this system, right? And while we really appreciated the commissioner instituting safety net because baselines for some organizations were really cut very low or zeroed out, we don't know, is that going to be there next year? What will be there next year? What should we be advocating for? How are these different decisions made? So just wanting to have more. And, you know, we heard today for the first time where those 125 organizations were from. And we heard, oh, they were mostly from Manhattan and, you know, only, not even half of them were organizations of color. So this is the type of data and information that we need to know. And so there's a certain frustration with that.
And Mr. King, thank you for that, Lucy. Mr. King, do you feel that arts service organizations currently have a competitive chance at receiving CDF grants?
What's really, thank you for the question. What's really interesting is, I'm sorry, I thought my voice would carry, but I do believe that there is, there needs to be a distinction, this idea of serving, educating, presenting, and producing. And we're not clear and intentional about ensuring that these delineations are spoken about and spoken to in terms of how the funding is distributed and allocated. Commissioner Combo made reference to the fact that the DC, the DCLA was intention, not intentional, that was her words, but something about this idea of them being an organization that funds producing houses, and it shows. It shows in how the funds are allocated. And so I do believe that service organizations are sometimes pushed aside and marginalized, already marginalized as dance being a marginal sector.
Thank you.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Kimberly Olson, Christopher Leon Johnson, and Myra Hernandez. You may begin when ready.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you to Chair Chi Ose and fellow committee members, as well as to the council staff for your passion, your leadership, and support for arts, culture, and arts education in New York City. My name is Kimberly Olson and I'm honored to be the Executive Director of the New York City Arts and Education Roundtable. We are a grassroots arts service organization working with thousands of artists, educators, and cultural organizations each year to improve and advance arts ed across the city. The Department of Cultural Affairs and the Cultural Development Fund are critical resources for New York City's arts education community. For many organizations in our membership, the impact of CDF and cultural initiative funding enables organizations to provide critical services to young New Yorkers in every neighborhood across all five boroughs. We often say at the Roundtable, it starts with the arts. And those after-school programs, field trips, arts partnerships, teen programs, and more that are funded by CDF seed and grow the next generation of arts workers and audiences. I will say for our organization in particular, funding from CDF was the first funding that we ever got when we became a nonprofit back in 1998. And that $5,000 transformed our organization. And for much of my organization's history, we were an organ budget under $250,000. And only recently were able to go beyond that threshold, due in part to the first-time multi-year funding we received through CDF last year. But with these pathways in mind, while the Roundtable applauds the agency for taking these steps towards centering equity, diversity, and accessibility in its application process, we acknowledge that this work is and will be ongoing and should be responsive to the needs of the field, as well as to the students and constituents that we all serve. I join my colleagues in asking for the following reforms to CDF. We ask that the grant schedule starts earlier so that grant letters can go out August 1st to better align with school year and fiscal year dates. We ask that DCLA clearly explain available funding streams and how best to navigate the system to be considered for them. Many within our community are quite eager to learn about and be considered for these streams. Yet I so often get emails of folks don't even know where to start and could be a pathway for partnership with arts service organizations to better disseminate this information. And lastly, I ask that DCLA create a dedicated funding stream for arts service organizations that we are not competing with arts-producing and presenting organizations. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Likewise.
Good afternoon. I would like to thank Chair Ose and the committee members for the opportunity to present testimony about the Cultural Development Fund. My name is Myra Hernandez and I'm the Director of Programs and Creative Development at CoCulture. I am submitting this testimony on behalf of CoCulture and the community of 50,000 families that access the city's rich cultural resources through our arts and cultural programs. With almost 25 years of BIPOC leadership, CoCulture has founded, was founded to correct the historic disparities in how and which communities are able to access cultural resources needed to ensure that they can engage individually and collectively in creative practice. Our staff of 13 CoCulture team members are Black, Latina, East and South Asian American, LGBTQ+, and Allies. CoCulture's community consists of 50,000 families who reflect the cultural diversity of our nation. 83% of our families are BIPOC. 47% speak a primary language other than English. And the majority face economic injustice. Over 1,000 educators and administrators from over 450 schools, early learning programming, programs, and community-based organizations. And hundreds of cultural workers, museum administrators, artists, and scientists from 90 of New York City's most celebrated museums, historical societies, botanical gardens, and zoos. I am here today to speak on behalf of continued capital investment in arts and culture with the added goal of moving towards achieving equity in New York City's cultural funding. The presence of robust cultural organizations and assets has been proven to improve outcomes in education, mental health, community strength, public safety, and aging, as well as decreased youth involvement with the justice system. A landmark 2017 study by the School of Social Policy and Practice at the University of Pennsylvania examined New York City's neighborhood cultural ecosystem and found that cultural resources are significantly linked to a higher quality of life, particularly in low and moderate income neighborhoods across New York City that have the least cultural resources. Along with these positive social impacts, arts and culture have been Along with these positive social impacts, arts and culture have been critical to New York City's economic recovery post-pandemic. Co-Culture urges, urges the city council and to make the following recommendations: to make the existing cultural advisory council be true oversight arm for DCLA, that it be supported with legislation requiring DCLA to meet with the council several times a year, and those, and that those meetings be made public; that the panel process be restructured to allow for diversification of a panel makeup with regard to representation across boroughs to ensure geographic distribution and racial diversity; a return to inclusion of council staff on panels for better transparency, and to increase the stipend to ensure a more robust and diverse panel; that the appeals process be reformed to be made more transparent and accessible for any organization with a legitimate grievance; that DCLA use an online tracking system so that organizations can know where their funds are in the process and can better predict when they will arrive; increase DCLA staffing and funding to provide the agency with the bandwidth to provide assistance to funding applicants and grantees to allow for more transparency in the funding process, and currently only 6% of the DCLA budget covers direct agency expenses. And with the goals of increasing equity, allow appeals from orgs that got zero funding from the CDF, and allow smaller unfunded orgs get access to feedback on their application, and an opportunity to have a focused category fund to fund additional funds for targeted orgs based on budget size, BIPOC leadership, et cetera, towards equity objectives. Many worthy cultural organizations face challenges to our survival, especially those organizations led by or serving Black, Indigenous, people of color, immigrant, LGBTQIA+, low-income, disabled, and older New Yorkers. And we strongly urge you to ensure the necessary support for arts and culture and to include the priorities of cultural organizations, particularly BIPOC-led institutions that have deep relationships with historically marginalized communities in New York City. This support will enable Co-Culture and other arts and culture community members to continue providing critical programs as our communities struggle through the city's recovery phase. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson, and I want to advocate for the resolution by Junie Menon for Bicycle Day. First off, we need to really celebrate the success of the bikes that's been, you know, occurred over the city, you know, the bike lanes and the multiple events that's been occurring because of bicycles. I know that you yourself, Brother Ose, been riding around all over New York City promoting the bike, the bike agenda, and I really love it, bro. I love your IG, what you do and your, your stuff. And, you know, I hope that every person in city council votes yes for the resolution for Bike, World Bicycle Day. And I'm gonna say one more thing, I know this is kind of a topic, but we have to give our condolences and our get well soon to Jacob Prilly, who was unfortunately hit by a bicycle, I mean, by a car while riding a bicycle on Union and Fifth Avenue. And what we need to do, I mean, I know this is gonna be a long time, is we need to advocate for helmet mandates in New York City because, you know, this is really needed. We give out too many helmets to the people to ride, but I think we need a mandate for everybody to start riding in New York City because we could have a resolution or World Bicycle Day, but if we don't promote the safety, the safety with riding the bicycle, it's not gonna do anything. You know, I mean, we could have a World Bicycle Day, World Wheels Day, it doesn't matter, but we need to start promoting the safety for riding bicycles. I know you're the, you're the cultural chair, so you don't have no oversight of it, but you have a bully pulpit, you have a powerful bully pulpit, and Mr. Ose, you should be pushing for a helmet ban in New York City, I mean, helmet mandate in New York City. But that's it. Thank you. Thank you. I gotta go.
Thank you to this panel. Our next panel will be Lisa Gold, Kate Madigan, and H. Harvey.
Okay. I'll start. Oh, did I turn it off? Okay, we'll start now. Good afternoon, Chair Ose. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm Lisa Gold, the Executive Director of the Asian American Arts Alliance, a 40-year-old art service organization that works to ensure greater representation, equity, and opportunities for Asian American artists and arts organizations across all disciplines. I am here because I want to voice my support for the Department of Cultural Affairs, as well as my support for your transparency bill. I echo many of my colleagues' requests for disclosure of funding streams, a very, a separate ASO funding stream, and earlier award notices. I, I wanted to say, I applaud DCLA's efforts to affect greater equity in the distribution of funds, and of course, the number of small organizations that received increases in their grant awards last fiscal year. However, the actual dollar amounts need to make, need to be made public in a timely manner so that the agency can be held accountable to gauge the efficacy of their reforms. With all due respect to Lance, I just checked open data and I could not find FY23 data on the DCLA grantees. So there's FY12 through 22, but I could not find FY23. We know that 19% of DCLA's budget is dedicated to the Cultural Development Fund, which is dispersed among 1,070 organizations, while over 51% of the budget is allocated to 34 CIGs, not a single one of which is AAPI-led or serving. And I did some math, which shows that AAPI-dedicated cultural organizations are 0.73% of DCLA grantees, while our community represents 18% of the city population. But I shouldn't have to do that math. It's imperative that DCLA shares that information and shares their data so that we can ensure that our taxpayer funds are indeed equitably serving all of our communities. Just full disclosure, we did, we are one of the ASOs that received a reduction in our, in our grant award, so just wanted to share that.
Good afternoon, Chair Ose. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Kate Madigan, Government Affairs Coordinator at the Public Theater. New York City is considered the cultural capital of the world, and as such, it is deeply intertwined with many aspects of daily life and the systems that support it. Cultural Institution Group members and Cultural Development Fund recipients often partner with each other with countless other industries across the city, including hotels, libraries, community centers, homeless centers, and more to create a more equitable and vibrant New York City. This makes it all the more surprising that cultural funding represents less than 1% of the city's budget. It is no wonder that the field is struggling to serve its communities and artists. The Public Theater is a member of the Cultural Institution Group, and speaking on behalf of CIGs, I can say we are, we were concerned when we learned about how the changes to the administration of the Cultural Development Fund affected many of our peers and the artists and communities they support. We appreciate that DCLA heard that, the feedback of the cultural community about the need for multi-year grant commitments and to, and that to some extent, this guided aspects of their administration of the program. However, the implementation of the plan stumbled when there was not enough adequate consultation of the affected, with the affected party. We've seen this repeated in FY24 budget without warning. CIGs were told after the budget was passed in July that it would have to absorb $5 million cut to its funding. Despite these frustrations, we also understand that DCLA is being forced to make tough decisions as it operates with limited resources. They too are part of the ecosystem in which we all exist. This is all the more concerning amidst the looming cumulative 15% peg cut that has been proposed to take place over the next six to nine months. These cuts on top of the changes CDF and CIGs have already experienced would be devastating for many cultural organizations. Particularly in this perilous moment, we see cultural organizations being forced to cut staff and programming as they struggle to stay afloat under the great economic duress we face. When we all support each other, the entire ecosystem thrives, but when support is taken away, it quickly deteriorates. We ask the council to continue its focus on ensuring the entire ecosystem has the support it needs. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for having me today. My name is H. Harvey, and I'm the Director of Marketing at Hook Arts Media, a nonprofit arts and education organization based in Red Hook, Brooklyn. For more than 30 years, we have worked with New York City educators to reform an educational system that has largely failed mostly BIPOC students. We have helped open three transfer high schools designing culturally responsive arts programs that increase student engagement, and introduced students to pathways to higher education and career planning. We serve between 700 and 1,000 young New Yorkers each year, the vast majority of whom are BIPOC and come from, and are deeply subject to economic injustice. And we disrupt gatekeeping in one of the city's most lucrative, competitive, and gate-kept industries. And to offer some transparency, I am also representing an organization that took a budget cut this year. We've distributed more than $90,000 in stipends to emerging filmmakers, again, coming from deeply economically unjust circumstances. And we are grateful to the Department of Cultural Affairs for supporting community arts media and education for young New Yorkers. BIPOC and impoverished young people often face disproportionate obstacles to attain educational and career success, not the least of which include the city's extreme cost of living in addition to the cost of materials in training programs. And it is the time to invest in the ever-changing needs of the next generation of community members, movers, and shakers. But I do join my colleagues in asking for some reforms to the CDF, including: we ask that DCLA clearly explain the available funding streams within CDF and how best to navigate the system to be considered for them; we ask that DCLA create a dedicated funding stream for art service organizations so that they are not competing with arts-producing and presenting organizations; we ask that DCLA reevaluate the budget size tiers and award amounts and create new and narrower tiers, particularly within the very broad $500,000 to $2.9 million tier; we ask that DCLA use an online tracking system so that organizations can know where their funds are in the process and can better predict when they will arrive; we ask that organizations could accept or decline all but the first year of multi-year grants and simply reapply in the out years. And we, of course, request increased staffing and funding. We are in a very critical juncture in the arts sector, and we should not be facing additional and undue pressures. Thank you all.
Thank you. See you tonight, right? Wilcotta?
Thank you to this panel. Our last in-person panel will be Martha Ion.
Thank you to the Chair Chi Ose and the rest of the city council. My name is Martha Ion, and I'm the Government Affairs Consultant for Museum Hugh, a member-driven organization dedicated to empowering Black, Indigenous, Latinx, Asian, and all people of color through research, advocacy, education, and community engagement. I'm testifying on behalf of a coalition of over 400 arts entities throughout our Hugh Arts New York City Initiative, representing BIPOC art entities across the five boroughs. We are not an agency, not a union, but are collectively bargaining for greater racial equity in arts funding. I join my colleagues working across the creative disciplines throughout the city and thanking the committee for their leadership. We fully support Chair Ose's bill regarding distribution of arts funding. Arts organizations like Weeksville Heritage Center in Brooklyn, Clemente on Lower East Side, the National Black Theater in Harlem, the Bronx Academy of Art, Dance, Think Chinatown, and other community-centered BIPOC cultural entities are often overlooked, while greater favor in funding is disproportionately given to cultural institution groups, CIGs, and other predominantly white institutions. What message is the city sending when the white art spaces are far more resourced to showcase and commission works by Black and Brown artists who are often first nurtured, mentored, and exhibited at insufficiently funded Black and Brown cultural institutions? The success of the DEAI in the arts shouldn't just be, shouldn't just be having Black and Brown bodies in white spaces, but the sustainability and thriveability of Black and Brown institutions. The arts funding in the city is not unique or an outlier in this nation's increasing racial disparities for providing equitable financial support for communities of color. We are not long ago, we are not long ago saw the near closure of Weeksville in Brooklyn and the ongoing struggles of the Sandy Ground and Staten Island, two historical Black communities and institutions. To revive the city's arts and culture and vibrant, we are looking to re-grant equitable funding to BIPOC entities across the city, provide professional development, advocate for city and state policies, and assist BIPOC arts entities in gaining long-term spaces to operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Museum Hugh is a critical part of the Hugh Arts Initiative, which addresses and recommends policy changes to bring more equity for Black, Indigenous, Asian, and Latinx artists and cultural organizations. What more does DCLA need to do to ensure more equity for BIPOC organizations through the CDF process? I know you listed out some, but if you could reiterate for the record.
Just to reiterate, we are looking for more funding for more BIPOC arts groups and institutions. We have felt that our organizations, our groups have been underfunded for hundreds of years. And at this point, with the dwindling Black population in New York City, it is imperative that our Black institutions are fully funded and also help preserve the history of what African Americans have done in New York City. The other challenge that we're facing is space. With an increase in pricing, our entities are struggling to keep up with rent and also find space to create art. So we're looking for, not only to support your bill, but more work in expanding funding, especially to tackle what has happened from COVID. COVID has greatly impacted our arts organizations, and we have not been able to not only hire, but also provide the programming at the level before COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That wraps up our in-person panelists. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. We will now turn to our virtual panelists. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your Our first virtual panel will be Talia Corin, Potri Kiano Noor, and David Shane. Talia, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Talia Corin, and I am the Co-Executive Director of the Alliance of Resident Theaters New York, also known as Art New York. As an arts service organization with a five-decade history, we are the go-to resource for over 425 theater companies, plus an additional 150 individual artist members. Art New York members live and work in every borough in New York City, provide services to New Yorkers in every zip code, and are a driver for jobs, economic activity, and the cultural activity that defines our great city. Furthermore, our members represent every identity, from collectives of disabled artists like collab and epic players, to multilingual and culturally specific companies like Pergonés Puerto Rican Traveling Theater and Ma Yi. Artists, administrators, audiences, and communities of every experience are served by Art New York. We partner with both private and public funders to operate re-grant programs that redistribute much-needed funds to many of the city's smallest and most emergent organizations. We operate subsidized office rehearsal and performance spaces in three locations across Manhattan and Brooklyn, and our workforce development and professional education services encompass everything from training theatrical ASL interpreters, to sexual harassment training, to support for building your first board and succession planning. Our services are vital to the still-ongoing recovery of our sector. Furthermore, Art New York and our related network of art service organizations, including our friends at Asian Americans for the Arts, Asian Americans Alliance for the Arts, and Dance NYC, who you heard from previously, are proud to be partners to the DCLA and amplifiers of taxpayer investment in the arts. ASOs act as a multiplier for public investment, ensuring that organizations, theater makers, artists, and audiences across the ecosystem benefit from this city's commitment to a vibrant and healthy arts sector. When ASO funding is cut, the impacts are felt throughout the field, often impacting those organizations most in need of the stabilizing impact of our work.
Time expired.
With the support of this council, the administration, and the DCLA, that the ASO organizations are recognized for the vital role we play. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Potri, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Salaam alaikum. Honoring Commissioner Lori Combo and Council Member Ose for Honoring Commissioner Lori Combo and Councilmember Ose for putting this, for this event that we have today in the session. My name is Potry Rankamanis. I am the Arts Executive Director and Founder of Kin Ding Sin Da Heritage Foundation. This is a 30-year-old organization that was founded by a nurse and a Filipino who is trying to assert, reclaim, preserve the indigenous heritage of the Southern Philippines. This is the only remnant of our civilization going back to 40th century. And reminders that we have a very strong ties with USA that is not very much acknowledged through our art, we would like to put it out in our production, dance theater, martial art, and also relate to the rest of the diaspora of the immigrants and people of color in Queens and the rest of the, of the boroughs. Our production is, and we're trying our best to be present in the milieu of artists, of art and culture in New York City. We're still very much invisible. We know, we know very much that Filipino is in the streamline of being actors and artists, mostly produced, you know, non-Filipino history that much. So we work on mental health, we work our repertory and workshops, we reach out to the communities and bring mental health, wellness, and presence of who are we Asians in relationship to our history and
Time expired.
Time is off?
You can finish.
Okay, so then, this is our, together with my colleagues today who witnessed, the panel process, we request DCLA to have a panel process with minimum three rounds of panel meetings, as has been the case previously, to allow for proper discussion, consideration, and vetting. This diversity panel makeup with regards to distribution across borough racial diversity, return to inclusion of council staff on panels to reflect system on check and balances. Funding stream, we would like to have a reform on clearly defining funding streams, looking at art services, which is non-producing organization, need to have their own funding stream application criteria, as their services is not public presentation that panelists can see. Create more budget bans to prevent organization with very different budget being compared. Multi-year grants, organization cut more for more than 40% in their multi-year grants should have other funds that they can apply for the ways safety network this year. Transparency on the decision of single and multi-year grants allocated, renewal application for multi-year grants simplified. With goals of increasing equity, allow appeals from organization that got zero from CDF regardless of whatever they receive in the discretionary dollars. Allow smaller unfunded organization get access to feedback on their application. Cultural equity funds, opportunity to have focused category funds toward additional funding for target organization, increase in character count to full issue organizational program, more money for DCLA to increase staff, addressing transparency in the process of decision-making, advanced communication with the organization about funding decision. We can work towards a timely timeline for applying that is more in line with the programming and fiscal year. Thank you so much. The rest of my testimony will be written, will be submitted in a written form. And thank you for bearing with me in my, I'm not a first English-language speaker, as an indigenous woman.
Thank you.
David, you may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Starting time.
Thank you so much. My name is David Shane, and I'm the Director of Program Services at the Alliance of Resident Theaters New York. Art New York provides services for over 425 theater companies and a growing number of individual artists, and our members live and work in every neighborhood in New York City. They are employers and arts workers, they are key economic drivers for the city, and they produce work for a variety of culturally specific communities as diverse as our city. As Chair Ose has already mentioned today, arts service organizations have a unique role to play in the city's cultural ecosystem, and I thank him for surfacing the concept of establishing a separate funding category for ASOs in the CDF process, which is a reform I join others here today in requesting. ASOs have a unique view of the challenges facing the sector. For the performing arts sector, the COVID crisis is far from over. Audiences have adopted new habits and are not attending the theater at 2019 levels, and increased expenses for labor and resources has led some to make the difficult decision to cut programming that has been vital to thousands of New Yorkers. Because these challenges are as acute as they've ever been, it's incredibly important that partnership with city government is transparent, consistent, and clear. So in addition to recommending a dedicated funding stream, I'd like to highlight the importance of transparency in the funding process so that hundreds of theater companies who depend on CDF to provide their services to New Yorkers can have clarity about how they access those funds. We think that hearings like this one are a valuable first step, and I echo the request that the Cultural Advisory Council be a true oversight arm for DCLA, and that it be supported with legislation requiring DCLA to meet with the council several times a year, and that those meetings be made public. We also call for the timely release of accessible data and applicants, about applicants, too, and awards made through the CDF process. Art New York is honored to be a valued partner to thousands of arts workers across our city, and we look forward to working closely with the Department of Cultural Affairs and the council to support the sector moving forward. On behalf of our board and staff and the thousands of arts workers we represent, we are grateful for this council, the Office of Councilmember Ose, the Speaker's Office, and Commissioner Combo for their time and championship, especially in this moment of uncertainty for our field. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes this panel. I'll just do a last call for those who registered to testify on Zoom. Frampton Tolbert, Cheryl Warfield, and Amanda Selwyn. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Seeing no one else, I'd like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of the hearing by emailing it to testimony@council新YorkCity.gov, or .nyc.gov, sorry. And I'll turn it back to the chair for closing statements.
Thank you, everyone. In this meeting, this hearing is adjourned.